Okay. Wolfboro Select Board Meeting on Wednesday, May 7, 2025. Any reason for non-public tonight?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Minutes. Minutes of April 9. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of April 9.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we have minutes of April 16.
Yes, I have a couple changes. The first one is on page three. It's talking about the Lions Club Smith River Canoe Race. And up above, I stepped down. Once I stepped down, I'm no longer counted in the tally show. It should be four zero.
Okay.
And then the other one was on 12.
Did you have some others?
I did. Go ahead, Lynda.
One more. The last sentence on page 12, it says Wolfboro Bay, and it should be inserted watershed and then management plan. Okay. That's mine.
Paul, you had something?
Yeah, page seven. An analytic discussion of actual versus budget. First attribution to me, the word, the sentences. This is a run rate. I'd just like to add to the end of that, run rate analysis. This is a run rate analysis. So I want to add to that, so I'm all set after that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion that we accept the April 16, 2025 minutes as amended.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have public input. Limited to three minutes. Twenty minutes total. Anybody want to talk to us?
My name is Paul Zimmerman. And I'm talking, first of all, about the pump that we installed years ago to pump the water down in the plazas at Center Street. The pump now is being used for other purposes. And if we get a flash rainstorm, which happens all over New Hampshire, the pump would have absolutely no value to pump the systems down at Clark Plaza and Wolfboro Plaza. I'd like to arrange a meeting sometime tomorrow with both Jim and Steve to resolve this problem. More importantly, there is a transition box in Center Street where sanitation sewer goes through one way and storm sewer, storm water goes through the other way. And this box fills up with sand during the winter and is usually cleaned out and sunk down in the summertime. Last summer, apparently this box did not get cleaned out. I was told that the cleanup system was stopped because of lack of finances to fund the cleaning out of this box. As a result of this problem, the box is now clogged, so water cannot drain out of Clark Plaza through the box into where the pump is located. So again, I'd like to have a meeting with both Jim and Steve tomorrow to resolve this issue to get this pump, this box pumped out as soon as possible. Any questions?
Jim, do you think that could be arranged?
Will 12:30 work for you?
12:30? I'll bring lunch. Thank you.
My office, 12:30.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else want to talk to us at this time? Okay, next on the agenda are temporary event permits. First, public hearing. The Board of Select will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 7, 2025, 6:30 p.m. to consider a temporary event permit application for New Hampshire Elite Series to host a midweek Bass tournament on July 9, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. From the Back Bay Launch Off Railroad Avenue Permit 2025-34. Anybody here to talk to that? I know this is something that's happened before.
I don't have any problem moving forward with it. They have all the material, and it's a small event. The only thing that I noticed, and Jim was on vacation, that the town needs to sign our part of the application. But other than that, I don't see anything.
And Jim, you intend to sign it?
I'll take that as a motion or as a second?
Hold on a minute. I have, I had one thing to say. I'm, I'm, I'm for this event, but I did want to make some mentions because I've done a lot of talking to other communities. I know for a fact that Center Harbor doesn't allow Bass events off of their docks in the months of June, July, and August. And I know that some of the towns don't allow them at all. So this shows again that Wolfboro is very accommodating to people and groups in, in the community, more so than some of the towns around us. So I, but I am for this event.
Yeah, I know that this is the same group, I think, that has had numerous tournaments on Lake Wentworth as well.
Yeah.
I think it's the same group.
Correct.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to issue a temporary event permit to New Hampshire Elite Series to host a midweek Bass tournament on July 9, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. From the Back Bay Boat Launch Off Railroad Avenue Permit 2025-34.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next public hearing, Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 7, 2025, at 6:30 to consider a temporary event application for the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation to host Great Strides Wolfboro Walk on May 17, 2025, at Foss Field in Long Bridge Falls Path from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Permit 2025-35. Anybody here to speak to that?
Hello. My name's Amanda French. This is our ninth Great Strides Walk over at the Foss Field. We've been having them for quite some time, even before the ninth year, or nine years ago. We hold them for my daughter, right there. She has cystic fibrosis. So it would be a very small event, about 20 people. We would gather at Foss Field, and we would walk out through the Cotton Valley Rail Trail, 1.5 miles out, 1.5 miles back. I have been in contact with the Cotton Valley Rail Trail in the past. I'm still waiting for a response this year. But in the past, they've told me, because it's such a small event, and they just deem us as a family walk, so we don't need permits from them. But I am, like I said, I do reach out every year to make sure that it is okay.
Okay. Any questions for Amanda? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board, somebody like to make a motion?
Jim, you're going to sign this? You were just...
Correct.
Okay.
Move to approve a temporary event permit application for the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation to host Great Strides Wolfboro Walk on May 17, 2025, at Foss Field and along Bridge Falls Path from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Permit number 2025-35.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next hearing we have is Wolf, Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 7, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. Consider a temporary event application for the Wolfboro Lions Club to host a car show at the Nick property from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Rain or shine, permit 2025-36.
Hi, I'm Gina Osard, Wolfboro Lions Club. This is our fifth year doing this. Car show is part of the Wolfboro Fourth of July Festival. It says rain or shine. We've had more rain than shine, unfortunately, but we always have a good turnout, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions? I have one. It says car show, it doesn't say antique car show, so it's...
That's correct.
New cars or old cars or whatever.
Anything's welcome.
Whatever you have. Okay.
Dave wants to bring a couple of his...
Dave's been there.
Yeah, he wants to bring a couple of those guys.
I've been there a few times.
He's been there.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Lions Club to host a car show at the Nick property from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Rain or shine on May 7, 2025. I'm sorry, it doesn't have the date. I'm sorry. Rain or shine permit 2025-36, and the date will be...
July 5.
July 5. Thank you.
I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Swimming right along.
Swimming.
Next on our agenda is a bulk vote. This consists of weekly manifest, property tax credit or exemptions, yield tax levy, tent to cut, one. Donation received from the library, for the library, for their solar project. There was via Warren article, and a raffle permit for the Wentworth Watershed Association on June 11, 2025. Anybody have any? One of the weekly manifests is a school payment of $2.396 million. Anything else on the bulk votes? Have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the bulk vote A through F.
Is there a raffle permit to? Yep.
Second? Second. Any all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next. School board, board and committee appointments. We've already done that, I think. Did that the last time. Any new business?
We got a bunch.
Okay, discussion Sinobacteria Bloom Protocol. Call Wolfboro Waters Committee.
Dave, I'll address that. The Wolfboro, New Hampshire Sinobacteria Bloom Identification and Reporting Protocol is being presented to the Select Board from the Wolfboro Waters Committee for approval tonight. In 2000, the 2025 Sinobacteria Bloom Identification and Reporting Protocol is an update of the 2019 Identification Reporting Protocol. The purpose of the document is to define the procedure to follow when a possible Sinobacteria Bloom has been spotted. There are five sections to the protocol. The first one is water surveillance and the possible Sinobacteria observation. This section lays out what steps a person should follow who observes what they think is a Sinobacteria Bloom. They are to use the New Hampshire D E S Bloom Report Form, notify Wolfboro Central Dispatch to provide information, and Central Dispatch will notify the town's internal communication hub, which is outlined in the document. Assessment of possible. It explains how to collect a sample of what you believe is Sinobacteria. It is New Hampshire D O T who will decide if it's a bloom or not. If it is a Sinobacteria Bloom, it is New Hampshire D O T, New Hampshire D E S, who will provide all the information on the bloom and whether it is a watch or a warning. And more definition is in the protocol itself. They will also be the one who will declare the end of the bloom. And then there will be an end of season review of the document. The document includes a definition of a bloom, a watch, and a warning, along with some pictures. This document has been sent to New Hampshire D O T for their information. So I don't know if any Select Board members have any questions or concerns. If not, I have a motion.
I have just one. So I know that we had an open position in the state. They're not going to fill that, and does that affect anything that's going to happen with the monitoring and the mapping and everything that we saw last year?
They say not. All they did, they, they have a position, and then they divided off the Sinobacteria. So they've moved that position back under the person who had it before. And so it, all, they have told us, all that they did last year is going to continue, but we're...
Hopeful.
They're having way more work to do, so they're not going to fill this position.
Okay. Thank you, Lynda. And Lynda, that was a fantastic summary of that document.
Well, Brian, thanks for the emails saying I can't speak more than 45 minutes.
Well, and thanks to the two of them for thanking each other.
Sorry. I have something. So a number of years ago, I went to Cary Beach, and there's a picture here of a clear glass, these gold balls that are floating in the water. And I actually got my mask on, and I went in the water, and all through the suspension, that's all you could see. But there was no Sinobacteria Bloom at the time.
That is Sinobacteria Bloom with those things, and it's D E S. When you go take a water sample, they'll do an analysis of it. And if there's 70,000 more parts per billion, they will then declare it a, either a warning or a watch. And they are the ones that you send the sample to. It's D E S who will call that.
So, so to that point, later on last fall, I went down there to Cary Beach, and there was actually a bloom in the southeast corner. And it was clearly obvious. But the people were down there, and they were swimming in it, and there was people in the boats, and they were, they were wading in it. And it just doesn't seem like there's a sense of urgency anymore because people have just become accustomed to it. What, what are we going to...
This is, this isn't the town of Wolfboro. This is the state of New Hampshire. What, the town has the Wolfboro Waters Committee. They're doing all sorts of testing of the water. This protocol is if any citizen sees a bloom, we need to get a sample. It needs to get to D E S, and D E S has to declare it. They have signs that they put up, but they can't stop people from going in the water.
I, I understand that. My point that I was trying to get at was, what happens when somebody sees this? Who do they contact?
1444.
Yeah, it's in this protocol. Do you call Central Dispatch?
So do we have a, do we have it posted down there at Cary Beach?
There is. I will ask Wolfboro Waters if they have it. But Wolfboro Waters is on the town website, sends out newsletters. I go and go to different places to do that. But I will ask them to put signs up at the different landings and beaches to do that.
The point that I'm trying to get at is, people need to know what the identification is and how to react to it. And so if they don't have that out in front of them, and they don't know what they're looking for, and if they don't, if they see the bloom, they just, I don't think people understand that they should react to something and make a call.
Well, but if I understand what Lynda read and said was that it would be identified as a bloom. But unless it's at a certain level, it won't, there won't be any signs or anything put up.
But what I'm trying to get, the, the public to identify and be able to call in.
I understand you want us, and I'm putting it down, and you're going to, you're on the committee, so you can come join me.
Yeah.
Is that we have more of this at the beaches and places where people will see it. I hear that. I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
That's not a bad idea. It's not a bad idea. If you see something, say something. You're on the committee, you get signed up to go figure out how to get it sold.
Right.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Get your mask, and you try. Okay. Anything else on the...
I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the 2025 Wolfboro, New Hampshire Sinobacteria Identification and Reporting Protocol.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Yep. Next on our agenda is purchase of two voting machines for the town clerk.
Yeah, so there's a change coming forward with voting in the state of New Hampshire. And one of the items that has to happen is the governing body has to approve these new voting machines. The town clerk has worked with the state. The state has recommended, I believe there were two different types of voting machines that are approved in the state of New Hampshire. And these are the machines that are most readily available. And I do believe that the other thing about this was, it was a two-for-one deal, so we could buy two of these machines for the price of one. And these funds were encumbered from 2024.
Okay.
And, and you may not know the answer to this, but I, I think it's true. There's been some concern by voters that voting machines, you know, have a little connection to the World Wide Web, and things can go out onto the internet. These machines, from what I, from what I understand, these, these particular devices are not connected to the internet. They're just like our existing machines. They're just a, you know, new and improved version of them. There's no internet connectivity, so it's all stored locally here and then printed locally.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, the Voting Machine Requisition Letter, dated May 7, by, and you, you gave it to us, Jim?
Uh, it actually came from the town clerk's office.
Prepared by the town clerk for the Dominion Image Cast Precinct 2 voting, two device voting machines.
Second.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is approval vessel landing permit for the motor vessel Mount Washington.
Hello again. Good to see you all. The permit in front of you is for the 2025 season. We aim to...
Excuse me, could you...
Jared Moreo, General Manager, M S Mount Washington. We aim to continue the six-day-a-week schedule that we've maintained since 2022. There is a small amendment that we need to make related to the July 5 date. In the evening, there will be a charter from Wolfboro for the Beverage Aquafest Craft Beer Festival. That's a repeating event since last year. We will make that amendment. And I'm happy to answer it. Oh, I do want to mention that per our last meeting, select managers had suggested that we include announcements about crosswalks in our, in our comments when we approach the dock. We did add that last season, so I hope that was helpful.
What was the announcement?
To make, to cross at crosswalks and not to jaywalk. So it's...
Oh, from the street?
Right. When people get off the ship and they...
No, the docks.
Thank you for trying.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for your best effort. The police department down there is giving you big high fives.
I'll give you a recording if you'd like, and you can...
No, no, please don't, because then we'd want, then we'd want more reports.
If half the people hear it, and then it helps.
Right, right.
Hey, congratu, off, off topic but related. You're being asked to submit photography to the, to the United States...
Yeah, it's in the Library of Congress.
Into the Library of Congress. Congratulations for that.
Thank you. They, they approached us a couple of years ago, and they asked if they could take pictures of the Sophie Sea as well as the Mount Washington in consideration of being part of that particular section of the Library of Congress.
That's pretty awesome.
Yeah, and we, we received the, the notification that it was accepted.
That's pretty awesome.
So that, that's about architectural excellence in American architecture, so.
Nice.
That's pretty awesome.
Very nice.
Very nice. Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the commercial vessel landing permit for 2025 for the M S Mount Washington.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the commercial vessel landing permit, mailboat Lugos III.
Back another year. Yeah, so June 15 to September 15.
Just state your name, please.
Oh, yes, Isaac McKenzie, captain of the mailboat. So yeah, June 15 till September 15, six days a week, except holidays, Sundays.
Okay, anybody have questions?
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know. Did anybody get the second page of the insurance writer? Because I didn't, and I think because I don't have the back, is there a back to it? Because I don't see it naming... That's what I got. It doesn't name the town co-insure, which all the others does, and I can't, I got a blank back page.
I was just told that it needs to say that the, where the boat is docked is the Wolfboro Town Dock. At least that's what I've been told as far as, I mean, I can, I can ask if there's a back to it.
I just...
Yeah, no, I got, every other one was a blank page.
I think it's, I think you might have sent it in, but we only have one page.
Yeah, so, so there is, all on the other one, there's a box that it's down the bottom of the second page that says that the town of Wolfboro is co-insured. I am sure your company will give that to us. So I just, I would like that, so they're all the same.
Yeah, absolutely, I can get that.
So I, I have a couple of questions here. So one of the, one of the requirements is to show the landing schedule, and I didn't see that in here. And the other thing...
Mail delivery schedule, six days a week.
So it says, says you're chartering. Is that, is that what your boat is doing? Are you chartering, or you just...
We take passengers and...
Just to do the mail?
Yes, and we, we do private charters as well.
You do? So that's, that's kind of, that's what I'm getting at. So we have a, we have a multitude of vessels that are doing commercial chartering, and I think where the board has been having a discussion on future processes for chartering commercial vessels and how we're going to address that, because we have a...
More.
A finite area that we need to have commercial vessels going in and out. And then we have the private docks where the public is going in and out. So, but again, the requirement is, in our ordinance, to have all the people that have commercial vessels to give us the landing points when they're going to be coming in and going out. Because obviously, if we have four different vessels coming in and going out, obviously, you have a specific location that, that you've had for years. But the, you know, we, we may be looking at something different in the future, so we need to, we want to understand what your process is this year.
Yep, I mean, we leave at 10:00 a.m. We're gone for about two and a half hours daily. I mean, except Sunday and holidays, June 15 to September 15.
And what's the chartering?
I mean, I did maybe a dozen or less charters last year. I mean, it's not something I really profit off of outside. I mean, I did a, a couple... I mean, it's not something I really profit off of outside. I mean, I did a couple charters for the, the town employees and as well as like a handful of others. But, I mean, as far as scheduling that, I mean, those are private charters that are scheduled, not before the summer. They're scheduled-
I, I, I completely understand the, the difficulty that we are having as a board is, again, we are trying to facilitate congestion in that small window area so that we understand when commercial vessels are coming in and picking people up. So that we can, again, we don't, we're, we need to be able to fully understand when vessels are coming in and going out.
Whatever information you need from me.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Are you sent John for now?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
So I, I think this is a, this is an old legacy issue that I think this board is going to have to deal with. From what I just heard you say, and I think I've heard others who've, who've come before us, as well as talked to Amy, trying to identify when someone is going to pick up the phone or send you an email or a text and say, "Hey, can I go out on your boat?" It's more of an episodic kind of a situation as opposed to you have a set amount of times where you depart to docks for charters.
Yeah, yeah, so the dive shop coordinates most, even charters outside of those.
So, so the, the, the ordinance we have, I'm, I'm not explaining it to you because you know better than we. The ordinance or whatever we have is, is prospectively out of date as it relates to types of business operations like yourself and the others that are out there. They, you know, they're, hey, somebody picks up the phone, calls me and says, "I want to rent your boat for $1,000 today to go out and have some charcuterie." The boat becomes available. So-
Oh, I don't, my, my boat does not-
I'm not, I'm just making up a number, just, you know, because there is people out there that actually have that listed on their website. So I think that's a problem we have to deal with. The, but the question I have is, you're, you're insured under Dive One of Pasaki. Are they the owner of your vessel?
No, I, I am the owner of the vessel.
You own the vessel. You have them insure your boat. How does, just help me understand that.
We attempted to, through myself, you know, I built a new boat and through myself, trying to get insurance. But previously, we had leased, I mean, before, I mean, my father had his own boats. But between my father having his own boats and my new boat, was we leased boats from the dive shop. So they were previously insured through him. Me trying to, Markell is the only name in the game. Trust me. I tried, it was a whole headache last year trying to get the boat insured. But me alone, through me, because I am not established, my LLC hasn't been established, they, they wouldn't insure. So I had to, I had to do it through-
So you had to have a, a benefactor, kind of a, yeah, I got it.
And they, they sell our tickets, so we're, we're business partners.
Do they collect any of your, of your revenues or profits? I shouldn't ask you that.
I think this is, this is about landing permit.
I'm just trying to figure out what the business is here. Thank you.
No, they, none of the, none of the postal contract is shared with-
Got it. Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, so I have some questions to ask about the landing permit. You do 77 mail runs a year?
I think that's what the contract says. So yeah, I mean, June 15th to September 15th, every day but Sunday and holidays, so.
And you said you did a dozen charters last year, which would be 24?
Maybe, yeah, so 24 landings. I definitely overestimated last year. I, I definitely gave you guys, I was generous with it. I definitely, I think I lowered it this year because I don't expect to.
So this year, you have it estimated at 43 charters?
Forty-three-
Charters.
Trips?
Trips. If you take the 240 landings, you subtract 154, which is mail runs, you end up with 86 left over.
Oh, okay.
Two landings in and out gives you 40-
Remainers, 43.
Yeah, you're going to be doing about 43 charters is your, is your guess.
Again, I was just being generous. I mean, I just, I'd rather overestimate than underestimate.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, last year, we thought about dividing the trip into, the mail trip into two trips.
Yep.
And then partway through, we decided it wasn't necessary. So we're just doing the one, one trip as far as delivering mail. And then charters, yeah, I mean.
And, and the, the contract doesn't specify who, but it does say that you split the charter. No, no, excuse me. An email that was received to us said that you split the charter costs with another third party.
Charter costs. I mean, if the dive shop schedules a charter for me, if they, if they, they bring, they schedule it, I give them 20% of the charter, private charter.
Okay.
We split ticket sales for the mailboat.
Okay. All right, okay. That's my only questions.
John, do you have any more questions?
Well, I had, I came back to the insurance there. So when you, so when you have them sign up for the, to have the insurance policy and you're the captain, what happens if something happens while you're the captain?
What do you mean?
So, so the insurance binder is through Dive One of Pasaki Corp., DBA, Wolfborough Corinthian Yacht Club. And then, but you're, but you're the, the Blue Ghost captain. So if you're the Blue Ghost captain and something, there's a, there's a storm or something picks up out there and something happens and God forbid, there's an accident, so what happens at that point? Are you liable or are they liable?
I mean, I, you mean as liable, like if I had passengers?
Yeah, because that's what we're, I mean, that's what I'm understanding, what the insurance-
I wouldn't be out there in this. I mean, okay, just theoretically, if, if there was an accident, then, then yes, it would be. I mean, I have an LLC, but the insurance is through the dive shop, which sells the tickets, their business partner. I mean, I don't, I'm not-
I'm just trying to understand the process, that's all.
I mean, we'd make a claim through the insurance that the, the policy that we have.
I just wanted to make sure that the town was covered properly because you have, seems like two, two separate identities here applying for the, the commercial vessel landing permit.
Okay, you mean as far as the dive, the dive shop and me? Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's just-
Doesn't, doesn't say that, you know, it doesn't say that Dive One of Pasaki is responsible for all the actions of, under Isaac McKenzie as the Wolfborough Charter Services LLC. It just says that Dive One of Pasaki Corp. is the, is the insured agent for the vessel.
That's why I was looking for that stamp that insured us. So if this policy had the stamp of insured us, that policy would cover the town of Wolfborough. That's what I was saying. I was missing that piece of this application.
I have to reach out to Tom and the dive shop to get that, because I don't have, he's the one that has to deal with Markell. And even him, that the agent that, it's the only, the only person we can deal with. It's not easy to deal with, so.
So were you able to get the stamped insurance certificate for the vessel from the, from whoever inspects the vessel?
I, I'm not familiar with what this back page is, but I, I do know that on the page that was sent, it does-
I'm going to guess that it's probably in Amy's office.
I was just waiting, I looked at a blank page and I kept on saying it's a blank page.
I'll bet you a nickel that Amy is out there in TV land watching this.
Because we all have a blank page.
And at any moment, Jim's phone's going to go ding and she may have it, but-
I, I think it was only that one page that I sent them. There might have been a backside to it that Tom never gave me.
Yeah, there's something else.
Oh, no, I gave her a physical copy, so then there might have been a backside to it. I didn't, I didn't email it to her. I did give her a copy that Tom left at the dive shop.
Amy, please help us wherever you are.
So I would, I would say that things are going to be potentially changing a little bit at the town docks.
I understand.
So you might want to see, you might want to see if there, if, I mean, die, if the dive has a slip or something so that you're locked in forever or, or something to that effect.
There has been talk, I mean, Tom knows that if, if that goes, that he might have to offer up one of the, the slips to me. I mean, if, if the issue is the charters outside the mail contract, I can, I can certainly make it so that any passengers and business I do charter-wise is off the, the dive shop dock or the yacht club dock. And I don't have to pick up any charters on the downtown docks. I mean, certainly another plan B I've thought is even going to the Wolfborough Inn and seeing if they're looking for a, you know, resident charter boat.
Yeah, and I, at least for my, my personal selfish interest, this is not worth rationing here with this ordinance that we have. And in my view, it, it is a legacy ordinance. It's, it, it does not reflect that you, that we have people now who just episodically want to collect passengers and take them out of town. That, that makes sense?
Yeah.
But at the same time, we have island residents who want to come into town. So we have this conflict we're trying to deal with. And trying to ask you to come up with a schedule for your charters, I think is, is, my words, a fool's errand.
Yeah.
But that adds to the complexity of what, what we're trying to accomplish. So I think Brian's point is right, and we'll speak to that in a minute.
I mean, I'm just one boat, one captain.
You say something first.
I think that because we have some confusion here, that we probably ought to table this still our next meeting. We have time between now and then for Isaac to-
To get the backside of the-
To get the backside of the stuff. Amy may have it and she can put it in our boxes. But without that, I don't think that we're all ready to, to approve it tonight.
Yeah, I just have one-
That's what I say.
Yeah, I just have one comment is, he's not coming into that commercial dock where the public is. He's in another dock, so I don't want people to think he's going into that area to pick up passenger. He's picking it up at his slip. I just want to make that sure, that's clear, because it's got a little confusing there. I will make a motion that we table this until our next meeting in order for us to get the insurance that we need.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step down for the next one.
Okay, the next on our agenda is 2025 barge permit for the Libby Dock Murray's Specialty Services. I think we have everything here that we need. This is basically for a barge permit.
He's paid. The, the insurance is, is there.
Yep.
I'll move to approve the John Murray New Barge Company application as complete and move to issue a permit for 2025.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, RGGI rebate.
Reggie.
Reggie.
So Barry's here to give you some annual good news. Barry?
Good evening. Barry Mucchio, Wolfboro Electric. I'm here for my annual visit.
Paul, thank you. You look so pleased with that.
My annual visit to request you to accept the regional greenhouse gas reimbursement monies. And secondly, to allow us to adjust our rate, to provide a rate of reduction to get those monies back to our ratepayers this year. We currently have accumulated about $565,000, good amount in there. And are proposing to rebate at a rate of 2.8 cents per kilowatt for the months of June, July, and August. If you have any questions, I'll certainly entertain those.
What a great idea.
I think anytime people get money back, I think is, there aren't going to be many questions.
Right, yeah, I'd hope you'd accept it. And it would represent about $16 to $17 off the, the average ratepayer per month for the, for the three months.
Any have any questions?
There's just one question. What's an average ratepayer number?
600 kilowatt hours a month is our average.
What does that work to dollars?
13 cents times 600 kilowatt.
Yeah.
Seventy, eighty bucks.
It's on our, if you, if you look at our rate comparison to other ratepayers, I have it exactly on there. What are we, like, 75 dollars?
Seventy-five bucks.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, somewhere in that range, yeah.
So that's a, that's a good deduction.
So that's a good, yeah, percentage-wise it is. Now, sometimes we'll do these twice a year or whatever. We, we, this is probably the longest we've gone. So we've accumulated a good chunk of money in there, probably more than we ever have. And the proceeds are actually up. I think we got $135,000 on the last auction in April, last month, so.
So that's 20% off for three months, right?
Can't complain.
Two months or three?
It's not bad.
Three months?
Three months.
Three months?
So, so, so to the, to the people that are watching, so June, July, and August, they're going to see that?
You will see that reduction. And on your bill, it will show regi reduction. There'll be a, we, we were able to add that on the bill, so you can actually see what the amount is that got reduced on your bill based on that reduction, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Related but unrelated, again, for the benefit of colleagues and the public, we've all been watching with great interest our good friends at Eversource, who we don't do business with, at least here in this continental part of Wolfborough. They're in front of the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission, looking for 20, 25. They're looking for big numbers to take place on their ratepayers in the month of August. And I asked Barry and Jim, is any of that going to kind of flop in our direction? And the answer is not now.
Not directly correct. We, you know, anything that's going on with Eversource right now would have no bearing on us specifically. They, they're such a small portion of our bill, all they do is provide metering services. So I think we can all expect a rate increase at our next, unfortunately, our next purchase power agreement, which will commence in 2027. I think we, we need to be expectant of that. What that actual increase is-
It's 2027. I don't know.
It's, yeah, it's still out there. We're still, we'll start negotiations this fall. But we can't, we can't forget the fact that it'll be 17 years since we've had a rate increase in the electric department. 17 years. I don't, I don't know of a lot of businesses that can say that, so.
Well, I bring it up because my, you know, my email kind of lit up a little bit with, will this affect me? So I just wanted Barry to address it and share it with the public. So thanks for doing that, Barry.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I just asked you to accept those and, as well as the rate change, and thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2.8 cent kilowatt regi rebate for the months of June, July, and August for the town of Wolfborough.
Second.
2025.
2025, second.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Barry or anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, next is request to use sidewalk capital reserve funds of $125,000.
So Steve's going to come and speak to you about potentially doing some sidewalk repairs. If you recall, a few years back, we established a capital reserve fund. That fund currently has $146,000 in it. And over the past couple of years, we've tried to secure quotes from contractors. And most of them have told us that the jobs have been too small for them to tackle. And Steve's been able to secure some pricing, and he's here to be able to speak to it and hopefully answer any questions that you may have. Steve?
Steve Randall, Wolfboro Public Works. And I never like going behind Barry, because he likes to get money back.
That's true.
So we are proposing a 4,500-foot stretch of sidewalk just south of Pleasant Valley intersection down to the corner of West and Auto. So that'll take care of that whole south side of sidewalk. If anybody has walked that this year, it took a lot of damage. It's been getting worse, and this winter was even worse on it. I was able to secure a quote from Allstate Paving, who is our main paver in town. They're subsidiary of R and D, or excuse me, DNR. And how this started, I'll just kind of tell a little backstory. We walked it this spring and we identified the real bad sections. And we said, okay, we're going to, we, we need to do these sections. Well, that turned into renting a sidewalk paver and us trying to do that amongst everything else we do. So I went to the pavers and I said, okay, can you guys, if we prep these, will you guys pave this? These sections, give me a price. And in talking with them, they came back with, well, if you want us, we could do all of this. We can rip out and rebinder and top 2,500 feet of it, and then 2,000 feet, which is in decent shape, we can overlay. So that is what I am proposing to do here. We're going to widen them to six feet, which will match what DOT is proposing out here. Thicknesses and cross-sections will all be the same as this. So my overall end goal is to try to get the majority of our sidewalks in town a little bit wider than they are now, which will allow us- bit wider than they are now, which will allow us to do something different with sidewalk plowing machines. The current crop of machines that we have, and to replace them, is a price ticket of $250,000 that we use for three months. So a little bit wider opens up the door to a lot of different other machines that we can use to do our sidewalks and possibly do other things at much less the cost. So that, that's the overall goal. We've been trying to do small pieces of sidewalk over the last few years, as Jim had said. This is a big section of the worst section, and I think this would be money well spent.
Brian?
So I'm guessing in four or five years, the state is going to be doing the South Main project?
Correct.
This that you're doing, is it far enough away from the project so it won't be touched, so it stays the way it is?
So the map that I just handed you, and I apologize I didn't send it through, there is a stretch in there from the actual McManus, where they're going to stop, down to almost to Timber Lane. There's a section in there that is in decent shape right now that I am not going to touch right now, only to give us the, that leeway of where they're going to go and stop. So if they don't touch that, we can revisit it at that point and connect it to, it's a relatively small section. But I don't want to do something and have to rip it back up again.
And then my second quick question is, we're only going to have about $20,000 left in the account. Is that enough to tweak little pieces if we need to in the downtown corridor and over Clark Plaza?
Anything that we have to tweak, that's patching. That's what we do now. That's what that would be. That'll still buy us some tonnage to get us through this year, and then obviously, we will ask for money to be put in to start to replenish that for '26.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Steve, for sending me the quote. The quote is for $138,750. Where is the difference going to come?
So I am going to edit my ask to 138,750. I had to submit the memo before the quote came in to your packet.
Okay.
So then I submitted the quote to Amy, and I just figured I could edit that on the floor for the full amount.
Okay, now that makes sense.
So it's really going to leave us with about $10,000.
So will we call that a timing issue?
Yeah. I have another question. How wide is the sidewalk now?
How wet or how wide?
Wide.
So it varies anywhere from five to five and a half.
Okay, so you're not.
So it's not, it's minor.
Okay.
We, you and I and DOT and some of the Rust Pond Association walked a lot of that area.
Yep.
Was that last fall?
Yes, it was.
It was last fall. And we had talked about some things that could be done down there work-wise for drainage and things like that. So I took that into consideration, too. This sidewalk won't interfere with that. That can still be done. But because that is probably in all reality, because it's DOT and funding and everything else, especially with what is happening with Rust Pond and that process right now, that's really going to be a year, year and a half away, I'm guessing. And I, I really don't want to wait any longer to do something with that sidewalk.
Well, that sidewalk is shot.
Yeah.
You know, if anybody drives by there, they can see all the cones and stuff like that.
We're running out of cones.
It will, it will be this much wider.
Correct.
Yeah, no, that's what I was asking.
The only people that will really notice the width is, is my guys when they're plowing it. And like I said, it's, my goal is to get something multipurpose for a fraction of the cost to plow these sidewalks.
Thank you for that added information.
John?
That was good backup.
So could you, could you walk us through this DNR quote?
Sure. So the total is 4,500 feet, and we are going to widen those to, like I said, we're going to widen them all out to six feet. So anywhere from six, four to six inches wider down through this. So if it's getting a full rip out, it's a non-issue. Anything that's there that's going to get overlaid, they are going to widen it, patch it, and then overlay it. So it will be done to get the thickness. It won't just all be one inch and then taper down. Removal hallway, that's supposed to be 2,500 feet, 2,500 feet of the, the stuff that is shot, all the spider cracked, all the broken, all that stuff, that will come out, get all regraded, and then that'll get based in. And then everything else will get an overlay shot all the way down through.
So, does anybody know what this is?
Two fingers elevated, separated by seven inches.
This is a soil profile. So what Steve is trying to say to us is, this is your cutout of your base of your walkway. And in a, in a perfect world, six inches would be inch and a half clear stone to allow the water that comes from the high side that goes underneath of it, that will go down. And then you've got another six inches of inch and a half crushed bank run, two to three inches of three-quarter crushed bank run, and then your three inches on top. We don't have that, do we?
We're not, and we're not, we're not proposing to do that. We're not proposing to box out that whole sidewalk down a foot and a half and rebuild all that.
So this is where, this is where I'm heading. We know that that is a chronically wet area down there from the high side, and the reason that it's in that condition right now is because that, that water got in there during the, during the winter, and your vehicles were, you know, just, just wide enough to go down that thing. And I'm looking at the timeframe when we last did that job. Was it 10 years ago?
It was in 2015, and it was a 100,000.
So, so this is where.
Was the whole sidewalk done then?
It went from the high school to Middleton Road.
So this is where I'm trying to go. I'm trying to say, I want this to last for 20 years. And when we make an attempt, and I understand what you're saying about regrading the strip on the side, you know, somebody's actually got to go down there with a machine and take out just a foot or eight inches along the side of it, put material in next to it, and then overlay it. But it still doesn't solve the issue of all the water that's coming down from the high side that runs up against that gravel, because gravel has aggregate in it, and that aggregate holds moisture. So when, in the wintertime, that moisture freezes, and in the spring, it thaws out, becomes soupy. And when you have the spring storms, you drive that piece of equipment on, over it, and it kind of has to sag out. So we're really, we're really not building this to a standard that we are going to have longevity of 20 years, because we, we're, we're doing a, we're doing a fix, but we're not doing the right job. And I really, I have a hard time, I, I support Steve Randall and his, and his efforts, but I don't support throwing money to something every 10 years, knowing that we still are not solving the real problem and doing it properly.
So I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, John. To fully box all that out and do that, that's probably $400,000. So to me, and again, if we hit 400 grand, I would much rather box that all out and rebuild the whole thing. But if every, you know, if you do, it's $10,000 a year to maintain the sidewalk at, at this current rate. So if we get 10 years, 10, 12 years out of rebuild at 130 versus 20 years out of 450, it's still, the money balance, we, we can't really wait. Or we're going to raise another half a million next year to rebuild that completely and just continue to patch it. So that's for you guys, I guess, to decide. I would rather at least get it to last for 10 years now than maybe we can come up with a, a better reserve plan with a full structure to, okay, in 10 years, we know we're going to need to fully rebuild this. We get in a different position across town, we're able to do that the next time around. But right now, we can't do that. So we either just continue to put whole patch down there and patch small sections, you know, and keep continually band-aided, or at least we get something that will hold and can be used for an extended period of time. And, and that's, that's how I am having to look at it.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry. You done?
Yeah, no, I, I can appreciate Steve's answer, and he's right. I think we're, we're both talking the same language. I just want the people out there to know that we, we aren't, we aren't going the full distance. We're not laying the geo-fabric down. We're not doing the layers properly. We are, we're, and we already spent $200,000 10 years ago, so.
100.
100.
100.
100, I'm sorry. But I think the people need to know that we're, we're doing something, but we're not really doing the best job that we can do.
And I, and I agree with that 100%. So for, for me, it's, you know, it's cost per foot of trying to maintain versus rebuild.
Yeah.
And I would be all for, if you guys could give me $400,000 or $500,000, I'd be more than happy to rebuild that whole thing, soup to nuts. I, I just don't think it's feasible at the moment.
I understand. Thank you.
I think Brian, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I'm at the point that I would support doing this. I think when I look at all the areas where the town needs to spend money, doing this to get, get this done and have a walkable sidewalk, because it's not walkable right now, I would go ahead. I think we need to look at what kind of money we think we could put in a sidewalk capital reserve account, because that's how we're going to do it. But all the sidewalks up and down South Main Street in the state's program is going to get redone. So those are going to get redone, and so we will have some time to save some money for the sidewalks. And I know at some point, there's talk about wanting a sidewalk on Bay Street. So when I look at what we have to spend money for in sidewalks, I'm comfortable spending this, understanding it is not a rebuild.
Steve, what is your, what is your road repair budget for the year?
So which one? The Warren article? It's 900,000.
900,000.
Yeah.
So to the point that Linda's, Linda's chiming in on, I had a conversation with Steve. Steve obviously agrees that he understands the concept. One of the things that we do as a town is we spend $200,000 engineering something when we could actually be spending that $200,000 on the actual guts of the job. So, so I just want everybody to understand that also, that, you know, we, we may not have to spend the $200,000 to engineer something, because we sacrifice product when actually Steve knows how to do the job.
And if I may add one more thing to kind of piggyback on what Linda was saying, there's a lot of sidewalks in town that need attention. I would, if anybody were to have any questions on, I'll use Mill Street as a perfect example. The Mill Street sidewalk is bad. We all know it's bad, but the road is bad, and some of the utilities are bad. So that will get done when the road gets done. So that is part of our overall road maintenance plan. So when we do these, there is a reason why we're going the way that we're going. We're not going to dig up Mill Street next year, as much as we would all love Mill Street to be redone, because if we're going to be working out here, we can't block every road into town. So we have to kind of pick and choose our way and wiggle our way through town to where we have the funding and where we have the stuff to be able to do it, so.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd just like to throw that in there. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a few questions?
Dave?
Yep.
Thank you for your assessment of how to, how to build it. My question would be, is this an all or nothing situation? And can you go back next year and try to improve how water runs underneath that stuff? Or is that, is that like a joke? You shouldn't do that.
We, we can do anything, Paul.
Okay. So that's, I don't, I don't want to get into an engineering, because I'm not smart enough to do that. So, so it's not an all or nothing kind of a proposition. And then the second is, and I, how much of this busting up of the sidewalk really is due to drainage versus the width of the sidewalk and the plows and the, and the plow equipment that we have maybe imposing some damage to the sidewalk? Does it get better if you, if you make the sidewalk wider? That would, that's my simple question.
Yes, it's better if the sidewalk is wider, number one. Number two, so all of those, all of those are factors, I guess.
Yeah, okay. So it comes down, for me, it comes down to, I, I agree with you, and I thank you, John, for the drainage conversation, because that's right. You want to do it right. But I'd, I'd suggest that maybe you come back next year and you try to find a way to get alongside of what you just rebuilt and try to get the water deeper into the ground, if you can do that, if that makes sense. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a drainage engineer. That could help us, it might buy us five more years. So instead of us having a, having a sidewalk for 10, we get a sidewalk for 15. That's not a bad idea. So you can find five more years of life, and we're in good shape.
I would also like to point out what is down there for hot top thickness is much thinner than what we're preparing to do.
Okay.
So a lot of that is an inch maybe.
But, but John's point's right. I mean, you, you got, you got water in it, heaves, and it's, what do you call it? Soupy? The soupy thing?
Yeah, but there's, so if, if I could add one critical aspect of this profile and the six inches, what it allows you to do is to infiltrate water into the ground.
Sure.
And therefore, it doesn't run off the top and then end up in Rust Pond.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really a critical aspect of infiltration of the water. You get it down in the subterranean, it starts to sink down into the earth rather than running off. If you do drainage down the side, you're just, you're piping it and you're running it off, and then you're, you're having to catch it, and then it's carrying sediment. So you're, so really, if you do the job right, you're actually making great strides on water quality.
Okay. So then this theory I had probably doesn't, pardon the pun, hold water from your point of view. So we're faced with a do it or don't do it. That's kind of where we're at. You want to do it or you not want to do it? So I'm going to make a motion that we, that we allow Steve to use, is it 125,000? Was that the number?
138,750.
138 and 750. 138,750. I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the 138,750 for Steve to go and, and repurpose 4,500 feet, linear feet of sidewalk on south end of town to be six feet wide.
I'll second it. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good for you, John.
I, I would also like to throw in the.
Wait, you don't want more money, though?
No, I don't. I waited to put this in at the end. They're actually want to be there now. So they're looking to do that and have that cleaned up.
Well, good we didn't table it.
Damn good thing we didn't table it.
Put any undue pressure on you.
So Steve, if I'm correct to you, Steve, the state does 109 and 109A and 28 in a 10-year cycle, don't they?
Of what, paving?
Paving.
Yeah, right.
I would, I would.
That's what.
And I would use the word paving loosely, because it's about that thing.
Yeah, and, and this is where I'm going. They, because they've told me that they do a 10-year cycle, so on and so on, and the, they could do the same thing. They could build those roads to last a long, long time, but they can't because they don't have the money. They don't have the money. They have, they spread themselves out, and they're doing the whole state, and they're just, like you said, they're putting a skim on.
I mean, to Linda's point, I mean, that's what we're looking at in town in general, is our overall infrastructure, where we are at with it and where to put the funding.
Yep.
Pine Hill Road was on the 10-year plan for the past 20 years.
Well.
So, and they finally just put a shim coat on it, right?
Yeah, and I'll just say that I drove it today, and it's already starting.
It's not a whole lot better than it was last year.
No, no, no.
There's any holes in it.
Damn good thing I got rid of my Jeep, because I banged my head on it, just hit my puddles.
Okay. I'll, I think we, did we vote on that?
Yes.
We did. It's done.
That's what I thought. All right, next one is request to use vehicle capital reserve, 152,830 for Public Works.
So this is the replacement of a vehicle that was in Steve's capital reserve fund, CIP project for this year. And I would note that if you look at the second page of the document, it is government, state pricing. So it, it does comply with our bid process, and Steve was able to find a vehicle and upfit it within what he has for funds remaining. Steve?
So this will be Ford Super Duty. It will be the fifth one that Public Works has. So, this will be Ford Super Duty, it will be the fifth one that Public Works has, different class, but same body and cab style, which for us is important as we're trying to keep everything very similar. It's much easier for parts, it's much easier for the mechanics, it's much easier for everything. Berry has one, Parks and Rec has one, so it allows us to stock less, work on the same. This will be the, since I've been here, this will be the third vehicle we've purchased from Groupon. I know Fire Department is looking at there as well, they've been fantastic to deal with. We purchase all of our Ford parts from there. They have, I was lucky enough, I had, secured a truck back in March, and then when the vote failed, I let it go, and then after revisiting all of our numbers and all of our stuff, I came back to this, and I was lucky enough to find they had another one on the lot. HP Fairfield will continue to do our upfit, like they did the last truck, and we are looking forward to replacing this and getting the one that it will replace out of town.
So, where is the truck actually coming from?
Groupon's and.
Groupon.
Dave, I got one quick one.
Yep.
Purpose and duties.
Yeah, what's the need?
What's the purpose and the duties of that vehicle? What is it going to be?
This particular truck, so this one will be, for summer use, will be mostly the chip truck, will have the chip box on it, it has, this one's going to have an LPAC toolbox between the cab and the body, so the chainsaws, signed packages, all those things will go in there, that's the guys that'll be out doing all the chipping and all the clearing on the sides of the road. That'll be its primary summer use. Winter use, it will be, because it is a smaller truck, it will be one of the ones that are downtown. Oops, that hits Green Street, Old Mill.
Plows.
Plows. Because it has plow in a wing.
And you're going to pour the plow over, or you getting a new one of those?
No, it's a fully new setup, everything is.
A new setup.
The only thing that I am carrying over is the spreader. The spreader I had to replace on the truck we're getting rid of, I had to buy a new spreader a year before last, so we're keeping that, and we're going to, it'll fit this.
And the answer, my question can't be, or my answer can't be, it won't pass inspection, but why is the old truck like?
But it actually won't.
Ouch.
Is it not, is it not being used now?
Nothing passes inspection.
It's being used now, it needs, it needs an emission filter, which comes with a price tag of about $9,000, so we're going to, we're going to send that before we have to do it. Right now, we're using it locally around town, Ben can clear the codes at the moment, but.
Are we, are we trading the truck, or are we?
We are trading it.
Okay.
And if I recall, Steve, September is when your inspections are up, so it's inspected through September.
It's inspected through September, which is why I'm.
And you have a trade-in value of 5,000 on this, and if we keep it, it's going to cost you 10 grand.
Correct.
To get it inspected.
To get inspected, so it's seems to be.
Well, I like the fact that it's being traded in, and we know how much that is.
We're not running a used car lot.
Right, so the trade-in, what I have been able to do with the ones that we have been trading in since I got here is, unfortunately, they're very old, and they're not in great shape, we don't get a ton of money for them, but I'm getting enough money to purchase the extended warranties with everything. So, this truck comes with a 10-year, 100,000-mile extended Ford warranty, 4,000 hours, and that's a $4,000 price tag. We get 5,000 for the truck, it's a net grand, I'm good with that. As much, you know, life expenseses of municipal trucks are 10 years, so if I can keep as much of this stuff under warranty for as long as we own it, that's a benefit. Today's electronics and emissions and every other thing that we have, it's.
They'll be out there lugging stuff for that sidewalk that you just fixed.
Okay, does someone like to make a motion to authorize Steve to spend this?
I'll make a motion to buy a Ford F-150 pickup truck for $152,000, 550.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is wooden current contract.
I would request that we table this. I was gone when Steve put the memo together, there's a couple of clarification issues that we've got to get worked out on this for the woodward and current contract. You might recall, they were in here in October and November, spoke to you as the board, and this was one of the items, was the extension of the contract for continuity of operations for them and for the town, so you'll get an update on this if we could table it until the next meeting.
So, I'll move to table this contract discussion.
I'll second it.
Could I speak to it, please? Can we specifically know why we're tabling it?
Well, if you look at the page that they sent us, and if you go down to the next to last line, it says effective January 1, 2025, and then it says, the next line says for a period, January 1, 2027 through May 2031, and I have no idea what timeframe or anything else we're.
So, one of the issues that we're tabling is we need clarification on the term of the contract. Is there anything else that would cause us to want to table this?
And I also would like specifically the amount of increase from the preceding one. I went back, I saw they came in on the wastewater treatment plant, I could go back and find a 2021 contract that I have, but I generally like to see the contracts and keep them, and so I can compare one to another.
So, it's term and it's dollar amount, is there anything else?
Linda?
About deliverable.
What's the contract number that you are seeing for the previous contract?
The one I have is 2021, and I didn't bring it with me, I didn't, because I had nothing here to compare it with, it's at home, but I, I don't know what the percentage increase is. Usually, when we get something like this, Jim will write a memo, and he hasn't been here to write a memo.
Yeah, if I remember right, this contract is CIP, right?
Yes.
Maximum of 4%.
4%. Because in, just, I know we're going to table, but to clarify, I think the reason that January was in here, they were in here in January and presented this, and I think that's why he wrote, because he's been after us for a couple months to get this to you guys, to do this, but going through budgets and everything else, we have, haven't had a chance to do it.
Well, then I would have been in a better shape if it had used January 1, 2025 through December 230, but when you moved 2027, I don't know the time period.
That's because the actual contract extension would kick in on the 27.
Well, that's why we need the contract, that's exactly the reason. This tells me nothing, it looks like days are messed up.
So, it's the term, and it's the dollars that will accrue, or we have to pay for the increment, is there anything else?
So, I was at the sewer treatment plant this spring, talking with Steve and going over his operations, and from what I'm understanding, he said that they were running the plant for $185,000 a year with three employees.
That's not, no, they get 100 and anywhere from 175 to 200 for repairs. Their actual contract is 863,000, I believe, for the year. Don't, it's 860-something.
So, we want to see those numbers.
Yes, that's it, you got it, John, that's exactly it.
The 180 he talked about is what we give them to upgrade or maintain the plant, beyond the contract.
Show me the data.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, everybody in agreement?
Yep.
Take a vote?
Yeah, there's a motion, I'll second it by Brian.
All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion on hazardous, household hazardous waste facility collection update.
Okay, so, obviously, since the unfortunate passing of Ms. Silk, we've had some challenges with the household hazardous waste program. We've had, Steve and a couple members of the board have been in contact and had meetings with the town of Alton. Sarah, when she was still with us back in the fall, was trying to contact the waste hauler, she was having troubles, having him respond back. We, as the town, upon Sarah's passing, tried to contact the waste hauler, the waste hauler has not been in communication back with us. We've had town attorney draft a letter to the waste hauler and has sent that to their general counsel, they have acknowledged receipt of the letter, however, we have not received a response back. Tomorrow will be three weeks, Steve and I will be having a conversation about this tomorrow with Nathan. With that said, we are supposed to be holding a, our first household hazardous collection waste event on the 17th. That is not going to happen, we do not know if the hauler's going to show up or not, and as of tomorrow, we will hopefully be able to solidify an agreement with Lakes Region Community, or Lakes Region Conservation Commission, to work with them to hold our household hazardous waste day. We will hold one in Wolfborough, tentatively right now, which will be locked down tomorrow, is June 21st. And the people of Wolfborough will be able to attend all of the other events that they hold around the Lakes Region. So, at this point, what we're coming in front of you and saying is, there is no household hazardous waste collection that's going to be taking place on the 17th. We will have more information for you at the next board meeting, which will give you the concrete answer as to the Lakes Region Planning Commission, the event on the 21st, and et cetera. They do use a different waste hauler, just for clarity, and Steve and I can try to answer any further questions you have.
I have a question.
Am I correct that we have sufficient funds in our budget that when our citizens go to any of the other collections around, that they aren't going to have to pay?
So, it is my understanding, what we, Lakes Region is going to charge us, we are going to buy into the regional collection setup, so we could buy into that right now. As it stands, I don't have the number right in front of me, I don't want to throw that out there.
I believe it's 13,000.
It's 13,000 with.
With us.
So, it's 30, I think it's 3,600, an extra 3,600 to have it on site. So, right now, they already have eight dates in the area, Lakes Region does, and if we buy, once we buy into that, you can go and you can drop your stuff off. So, we are looking to buy into that, and then basically buy a ninth day for the region to house it here in June.
So, what you're saying, when we buy in, it will be just like it is here, that we do not have to go in with a $5 or $10, it will be paid for and we can drop off?
That is my understanding, Linda. I will get clarification from that tomorrow, because, but that is how I am reading it and understanding it, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we got two things here, one is, we have a no May 17 date, because the hauler hasn't gotten back to us. Who's got the go-do to let everybody in town know that that's going to happen? Somebody's got to, you know, get the word out. Let you figure it out, unless you want to tell us.
We've already started.
Okay, we just make sure everybody gets the word out that we're not going to have that. And then the second piece, to Linda's right, is, you know, we need to then communicate what the proxy, what the procedure is, if I'm going to haul, you know, hazardous waste, do I have to bring my new real ID license?
Yes, right, definitely need that one.
Or my, you know, what do I got to do? And that's to be determined, but you'll determine that in the next?
Hopefully tomorrow afternoon.
So, we'll have that hopefully by Monday?
That's the goal, and then what we'll do is we'll start to put that out on town websites, the social media, we'll put it on full blast.
Yeah.
Probably we'll type up something and put it up at the transfer station directly.
That kind of closes the loop, right? We're not going to do this one, people are going to go, so when are you going to do another one, and how do I get to the other one? And if that's all done by Monday and we blast it out, we should be in good shape.
Can we, we can't blast it out Monday if the Board of Selectmen hasn't accepted the contract.
That's true.
Right?
It's true.
So, I mean, it, I want to see it and understand.
That's that select board problem.
I think you got it up too fast.
I think, I think what we can do is, if you guys have to see that, because the, right now, the working date for Wolfborough is June 21st, I think that gives us, to you guys, for two more weeks to see it, if we can get it wrapped up, right?
Yeah, I think I can probably provide you a copy of that tomorrow evening.
But we, as a board, are going to have to vote on it, we can do a special quick meeting if that's what we are, but what, voting on it needs to be done in public.
Yeah, we learned in our right-to-know stuff that we can't just vote and pass it around, right? So, we'd have to have a special meeting.
I understand that, but you're also asking for a copy of the contract. What I'm saying is, I can provide you a copy of the contract, I hope, tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
So, Steve, will we be able to see what the cost has been over the last few years for our collection and disposal, and what the cost is going to be going forward with this new system?
So, what I think we can do, because, because of how all the, everything, all the costing, how the billing for all that went, actually went through Alton, all we did was write one check and send it to them. What we'll be able to do is show you the one check we sent to Alton versus the one check we sent to Lakes Region. You'll be able to see the difference, because keep in mind, it should, it's going to be quite a bit less, because it's one day versus six, so it's in that aspect of it.
So, we'll do it one day a year, could we do more than one day if we thought necessary, or is it not necessary?
So, the point of the regional is that it's not necessary, you just, means you, instead of just driving up here every once a month, you might have to drive to Tuftonboro, you might have to drive to Moltenboro, if you don't hit the one here.
Yeah.
You know, if we want more days, that's more money, and right now, the way I'm understanding with Lakes Region is that's probably not.
Necessary.
And also, Alton is going to add in, Alton is going to, Alton is doing the same thing, so it'll end up being a day there as well.
And I don't, and I don't know this one, and maybe the captain can just give us a nod, we still have the ability for citizens to drop off.
Drugs.
Drugs, needles, things at PD?
Yeah.
So, we are down on that side, too, okay? We just need to make sure people understand that.
Okay, more here. So, for the money, how much do we collect for the money?
How much do we collect?
Well, during the household, for the $13,000, how much product do we actually accept?
I couldn't answer that for you.
They do provide a manifest.
So, after the fact, I can tell you, but I can't tell you that in advance, I have no idea what that one day is going to generate.
Johnny, you're talking about how much tonnage is going into the waste stream?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea of, if we spend $13,000, how much do we pull off the street?
So, last year, we had, I want to say somewhere around 400 people, I think, went through there in six weeks, something like that, it varies over the days, but cumulatively over between Alton's days and this one, I think the manifest said somewhere around 400 people.
And part of the reason we don't have all that is that all that was held in the joint, the milfoil joint board, all that finance, and so we just paid into that, so it's hard for us. All, they have all those statistics, we do not.
I'm trying to get a scale, year after year after year, to say, we're taking this much off, we're taking this much off, and then cumulatively, after a certain span of five or 10 years, we can, we can see how much is, is it going down, or is it going up, or what's the scale?
But we can't, we'd have to go back and get the joint boards material, and I don't know if they have that. We can do that going forward, this year to the following year, but we can't go back because it wasn't the information that we had.
I think that's good information for the town to know.
I'm happy that we're doing almost the same service, it's less days, but we're saving money.
Maybe, that's the goal.
Yeah, I'll take it, that's a win-win.
Okay.
All right, we all set with that for now?
Yep.
Next on our agenda, Public Works Department Spring Update.
This is my last one. So, while I was here, I just wanted to kind of give you a quick little overview of what we've been doing over the last, since I was here last month ago. We've started backup out there, any of you have seen, we're going through that process to get that complete. We started some test pave section this morning down in Blacks, and let me explain that out a little bit.
So, could you say what that is for the people that are home?
It's exactly, so out here at South Main, what is going to happen is all of this patching that has been sitting here since last fall is all coming out, that all gets come out, that all gets dug out, all the ground underneath it gets regraded, compacted, and then it will be paved and lifts up to a flush level, all the way up the street, all the cross-sections, everything. Once that is complete, a milling machine will then come in and then mill all the way down across that, two feet wider than what is there. Then, a paving machine will come in and overlay an inch and a half over that whole thing to make it seamless. That is how that, that is how that is supposed to work from here out. So, you're going to see that dug up, repaved, milled, you know, so up, down, back up again. But that is how we can ensure the product is smooth when it is done. Once that is done, all the line striping, which is part of that contract, will come into play, from Pickering Corner to the bridge, all the crosswalks, all the parking spaces will all be new down through there, since most of those are all dug through, so all of that will be done. Curbing will all be, everything that has been disturbed will be. Kirby will all be, everything that has been disturbed will be reset. We've had multiple meetings about that this week. The sidewalks, same concept. All that old hot top that was put in this fall will be taken out and repaved to make it smooth.
Smooth.
So this is between Public Works, Stan Tech, New Hampshire DOT, and New Hampshire DES, that's four of us, are all looking at that. And I think you mentioned it earlier, if you drove down by Blacks today, you saw a lot of vests.
It was amazing.
Yes, I saw everybody kind of.
You know, we, we spent, there were two representatives from, from Stan Tech were there today. DES was there today, DOT stopped by, we're having another meeting on Friday, and I was there till 12:30.
15 people.
To watch, to make sure that we get that up to where we need it to be. So we are still on schedule.
That's what's going to be the question.
We are still on schedule.
June 21st?
Actually, I think it's the 20th is a Friday. I'm pretty sure it's the 20th.
I'll take the 20th.
Assuming we don't have a ton of rain, that pushes the paving off. That is my drive for that, because the following week and a half later is the 4th of July, and I have made sure that everybody knows that if, that by the 4th of July, we're all probably going to get strung up, so.
Well, most of us.
On this side of the table are going to get strung up.
Yeah, I've had one complaint about the equipment being down in the downtown when we have a holiday weekend, and if that could be pulled out so we don't look like we're in the middle of, of construction, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, the other conversation I had on Monday with them was, so their intention to do what they did today was Monday mornings, they blocked off the spaces, they had the machine and everything there. When the paving getting called off, I reminded them that we need to open up as many spaces as possible if they are not actively working in it.
Yeah.
So that is an ongoing conversation that we have with the contractor to make sure that that is all tightened up and cleaned, and to your point.
Memorial Day weekend, if you can pull it out, yes, that's what...
So last year, when we hit the holiday weekends, I made them pull them completely, and I'm going to do the same thing this year. They need to go where we can't see them.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
So this spring update, Steve, Jim, is particular to the...
No, I just...
You've got other stuff you want to tell us?
Oh, I've got other stuff.
Oh, please.
I'm telling you, I just figured I'd start with that one.
Let him finish, Paul.
Diana here.
I just wanted to start with that one, since that's probably the most talked about at the moment.
And I just want, I just want to mention that people, it's hard, but please be patient as, as much as you can. We're like every other town that has to replace 125-year-old infrastructure.
So I will say, by and large, with the exception of, when are you going to fix the speed bumps? People have been very good. I think they somewhat understand, it, over time, it does drag on, but the project is on schedule, it's not, it hasn't been dragged out for another season, so I understand the frustrations, because we have them too, just like everybody here. So it's, we are trying to get it squared away and doing the best that we can with it to get it completed, and we have our road and our nice new water main up and running.
John?
So we got a letter from Patty Cook at the Pickering House. There's two spots, and one in front of the Pickering House, the, right on the edge of the walkway right there, that's a giant hole, it's probably about a three-foot circle.
Yep.
And then in the next driveway down that goes to the parking for the school, it looks like it's all sagged out. I walked it yesterday. That one's really bad. I'm worried about kids and parents walking to school, twisting an ankle in that spot. I mean, it's...
We, we've identified that one, so the one, the other one...
Yep.
Was, is not, nothing to do with us. That's their, that was their driveway.
It just opened up then?
Yeah, we didn't, we weren't digging anywhere near that, so that is why, a couple reasons, but that was not our, that was not our responsibility to fix that.
Okay.
And as most of you know, I pretty well draw a hard line to what is our responsibility and what is not.
Sure, just wanted to, just wanted to get that out there.
It's not trying to be not a good neighbor, but we have to have boundaries someplace.
Okay, so the next, the next one down?
The next one down is 100% on them to fix, and it's already on the list.
Are they going to make a temporary and put some of that?
It'll be temporary until it gets boxed out on the way up the road.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So the original was, they were going to do a test strip there, and then they were going to jump up there and start to finish paving down. So this afternoon, he told me he's going to start down there. So that changes our conversation, so they know they need to address that sink.
I know they were doing some cold patch in different areas first, so...
And that's what you're going to see all the way through on any of these spots for now is cold patch, they put it in, take it out. And, you know, and to Patty's driveway, Sunday was in there today, and they took that out and repaved it, so.
But that other spot there, again, when I was...
That is 100%, that's our responsibility, because they dug right through there.
We should get that ASAP.
Yep. Excuse me. Any good on that one?
Right.
So Lainer Street is coming along, manholes are in, doing pressure testing on those each day, everyone we've tested so far has all passed. That is a lovely project down there, as you can imagine, digging down through everything that's been buried in there.
Stuff.
Stuff.
I think there's a house in there, there's plenty of things in there. But that contractor has been fantastic to deal with. Nothing there has gone to plan, of course, so we've pretty much, we've had to field adjust each day to make things fit in there, but they've been great to work with, and I'm hoping that they bid on our next one.
Did we have to pump out? I thought I saw some pumper.
We did, so we had a, we had a water main break.
Oh, is that what it was? Oh, I knew there was a lot of something in there.
Yeah, so we had a water main break last Tuesday, I think.
Whatever it is.
My days kind of blend, but I'm pretty sure, yeah, we, so it was 2,200 gallons a minute.
Oh, nice.
It was a nice old cast iron main, and when we opened it up, inside of a 20-foot piece, there was six patches in it. So we took that out, we did it, but we had some pumps in there, and luckily I had, we were, we had the back truck in, so I had the back truck come over and get it down so that we could repair it.
Yep, that's what I saw.
Yep, we got it repaired. We were, we were, that line was shut down for about two hours, but then we had the main back on, so. But other than that, and even that, considering what is buried over there, I'm very happy with how that was coming along. I don't have the crane schedule exactly to tell you when that is going to come on, but it will be coming here in the next couple of weeks, I believe. So we'll be setting that pump station and then start all the changeovers, so that's a big one for me to cross off my honeydew list. We paved this, we paved last week, we overlaid the Maplewood Partridge area, all of those roads that were rebuilt two years ago now have their final coat on. We still will come in probably throughout the course of the summer towards the fall and do the shoulder work, but that has all been redone. The diversion culvert went in before the paving was done, so that is now in. There's actually grass growing in the swale now, so we've got that in. We, you'll see, we did some, if anybody's driving on Sewell Road, you'll see we did 15, 5, 5,500 feet of shim coat on that, on all the bad sections. So that, I did it a little differently this year. We have some culverts to replace on Sewell Road, so in the fall, we will do those, but normally what I do is replace the culverts and then I would do the shim coat, because next year, we're going to overlay. I did it for two reasons this year, I did it differently. One, I want to give everybody the chance that runs here in the summer to actually run on a road that's not as bad as that one was. So we'll go in and we'll, we have a couple culverts to replace, we'll do those in the fall, and then we'll patch those in for the winter, and then next spring, summer, assuming our warrant article passes, that is on for 26, from stop sign to stop sign, that will get an inch and a half overlay, so that road will be crossed off the list. We still have two reclaimed roads to do, Point Sewell and Beach Pond, we are actively doing the drainage on those now, those should be paved. I'm hoping to see the reclaimer by the end of the month, and then we will start doing, the, would be the end of Beach Pond, from the Ospey Line coming back this way. We're starting those hills and repaving those, and the goal will be the next few years to just start working our way back to town.
And there's a section of that that's gravel, am I correct?
Several.
Gravel?
There's, there's two sections that are gravel, and my goal is, so this year, we will get, one of those will be gone, and then we'll still leave a section next year that I'm hoping to pave, so.
So you're going to pave that whole road eventually?
I won't pave that whole road.
Okay, that's what I was trying to find out.
Didn't you last year go out there and do culverts on that road?
We did. We did drain, we did a bunch of drainage on the hill just below High Meadows, and we built that road up. That section of road probably went up three feet, so we just have to reclaim the two hot top hills that are before and after that, and the cross culverts that are in the hills, and then we'll be able to reclaim, and we'll overlay that gravel-wise, binder it for the, for this year. And then, like you said, my goal with Beach Pond, because it is so heavily traveled...
Yeah.
And it is so bad, the dirt is so bad, is to get that done.
So you're going to go all the way to the Ospey Line, right?
Yep, and I've talked with TJ over in Ospey, and he's working to try to see if he can do, yes, but they're, they're, they're like we are. Their budget is set, and he's working with what he can, so. We are doing our, we have five of our seasonal meter pits are already in, up and running. I'm waiting for the second contractor to come in to do the next round, to be the second round, but we have Oakwood, Rusty Lane, which is down off of Middleton Road, Camp School, O'Kee Waden, and Forest Road are in, up and running. So those are in with the master meters, the dual checks, and those are running well. So that, that, that project is half complete, and then we have our daily maintenance. I have a crew out sweeping every day, trying to catch up with that. We have the crew doing drainage on Point Sewell, one crew doing drainage on Beach Pond, and then you'll see Bruce out doing Bruce things. He was down with his helper down today doing, cleaning the docks, pressure washing, his, his normal routine. So we're quite busy. We're still doing flushing, so you'll see Bridget's out pretty much doing flushing every day. You'll see the water department out doing that, and the highway department will be scattered all over town.
Yeah, during the Memorial Day weekend, could we put those signs in the middle of the road where the sidewalks, I mean, the crosswalks should be that are not going to be visible?
We had to order a couple new ones, but we'll have them out before then.
Okay, good.
Some of them got, decided to walk away or drag down the road last year, so.
Yeah, they do, or they get hit, you know?
Bless I mean, and they hook them and...
Yep.
They take them.
It just would be helpful, because, so people realize where those crosswalks are if they're not natives.
I'm hopeful that that will be striped by then, but that, that could be wishful thinking, but...
Memorial Day?
Yeah, three weeks.
Okay.
Listen, I got, it could be something.
I'll, I'll take it.
I'm going to be all good for one. And then, other than for Public Works, as far as the admin goes, we are, you know, for Steve and I, we are just still trying to plan, still trying to track everything, and working towards, we're already looking at the budget for 26, so, sort of that.
Yay.
Okay, that's where we're at, so.
And you got a truck out of it.
And I'm getting a truck, so.
Life is good.
Life is good. I'm getting a truck and I'm getting new sidewalks, so overall, I'm, I'm happy.
Thank you for that. I think the public will like to know all that.
I want a video of you riding your bike down the sidewalk.
I don't. Brian, I haven't ridden a bike in 40 years. So, oh, and one more thing I'd like to throw in, if anybody has any questions, please give us a call. You know, we're, one of us is around most of the time. My cellphone is always posted, I answer it all the time. I'm more than happy to answer questions if anybody has them, so please ask. We are nice people, contrary to, we can be to talk to. All right, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Steve.
Next on our agenda is conditional use permit, short-term rental application fees.
That would be...
Somebody going to address this for us?
Mr. Braskin.
Oh, here we go.
Good morning, I'm here in the kitchen. Doug Braskin, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm not sure what questions you have, but I assume in your packet, you saw the application for the short-term rentals in Wolfboro, which proposes an application fee of $300 and a public hearing notice fee of $150. The way we came up with the $300, the planning technician and the assistant town manager did an analysis of the wages and benefits for the town employees, assuming that we would need an administrative person from the planning department and two department heads for the inspections to approve the short-term rentals, and there's the 150 public hearing notice fee is to have the special exception that would need to be put forth for each application. So that's a total of $450, and that would be good for the first two years. We have not yet come up with a number for the renewal fee that would be required after the initial two years. Any questions?
The, I think it, I like the, the look of it. It puts us maybe a little bit on the high end, but that's okay, I'm good with that. There was something that I was looking at when I stumbled across, I was looking at ADA compliance regulations, and I don't, this doesn't apply to this, but it's something that I wanted to mention, is that, and it needs to be confirmed, but from what I've read, a building with five units and any new construction building that is used for short-term rentals needs to meet ADA compliance. So any building in the town that has five units that are rented as short-term rentals would have to have ADA compliance for it, and also any new structure that's built, even if it doesn't have five bedrooms, I believe, would have to meet ADA...
So units is bedrooms? Units is bedroom? You mean units is bedroom?
Yes, yeah, would have to, so it's just something that I'm, that I'm, I'm hoping that the planning board will look at as another way, as a mechanism to make sure that our short-term rentals are safe and available to all.
That's a good point, thank you, and yes, certainly the, much of the purpose of the short-term rental regulations are focused on safety for the renters.
Yeah.
Where were you reading that from?
ADA.gov.
Thank you. So it's a federal, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Well, to me, the thing is that I went back and looked at the warrant article, what did we ask the public to support? And there was nothing in there for ADA, so if you're going to add ADA, this would have to go back out to a vote, because you would be changing the ordinance. It's not something, but if it's in a code that's already there, I think there's a, there's a question, you know, is our code officer and our fire chief, when they go into a building, are they also looking for the other codes? And I didn't think that's what they were supposed to do, they were dealing with this code. So I think there's a lot of question of how we would get that into this code.
So ADA has a couple things that go for it. One is, it's, you're not grandfathered. If you don't meet ADA, you don't meet ADA. It doesn't matter if you've been renting your five-unit Airbnb for 1,000 years, you still have to meet ADA compliance. And any person, or code officer, or fire chief, or anybody, can put in a complaint to the town about ADA compliance. And it is our code officer's responsibility then to forward that to the ADA compliance office in Concord. So we have another mechanism to make sure that our short-term rentals are available for all if we're going to have them and permit them and charge fees for them.
To your point, I would say, rather than available for all, I'd say accessible to all.
Mm-hmm, accessible for all.
So you said that was for five units or more?
Correct.
So if you were renting one or two, it wouldn't...
Correct, and if you...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood you.
Yeah, and if you live in the house, then that exempts you from having to meet ADA compliance.
Okay, good.
So there's a lot of rules and regulations, but we, I think the, I think planning would, it'd be good for planning to look into that, because I, I can think of a couple in town that have five units, that the owner doesn't live there, that don't make ADA compliance.
And Brian, to your point, the point you made just a few minutes ago with regard And Ryan, to your point, the point you made just a few minutes ago with regard to cost, we're on the high end, as you say.
Yep.
However, uh, that is only for the initial application.
Yep.
We're on the low end for renewal.
Yep, and, and, and I'm okay with the high end because the whole purpose of this is to offset the expense of our staff managing these fees.
Certainly. We're not trying to use this as an income stream for the town.
It should just be, it should just be, it should be self-sustaining.
That's right.
Correct.
John? So, uh, thank you, Doug. The, uh, conditional use fee for the public notice fee in the newspaper, are we consistent with all the other people that have to apply for a conditional use permit fee? Are they also being charged that amount?
Yes, that's correct. It's the same fee whether you're going for any special exception or conditional use permit, regardless of whether it's a short-term rental or some other thing.
Okay, so my next question goes to Jim. Have we, have we had our legal counsel review this document?
So our legal counsel, um, actually met with the Short-Term Rentals Committee probably a year ago now, I would guess, Doug. Um, and the conversation was whether or not we should be licensing or whether we should be going this route. The recommendation was going this particular route. This will be reviewed by Nathan, um, but this was the path that he had recommended, and this is very similar, uh, to what was adopted in two other, uh, communities in very close proximity.
Okay, great. So the, uh, the third aspect goes to the process moving forward because we have people out there, we always, so I was on the planning board, and I was on the chairman of the Short-Term Rentals Committee. And at that time, we had people coming to us that said the 80-year-old lady needed to rent her room, cottage, or whatever it was to pay her taxes. And at that time, uh, she just took the money and put it in her pocket. And she was a short-term rental person. And from what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the requirement is, these are for all new short-term rentals moving forward. Because we're not going back to, to look at those people to say, did those people pay their rooms and meals tax so that they could continue being a short-term rental person and not have to go through the process? Because basically, the way I look at it is those people came to us and said, we've been renting, we should continue to be able to rent. And at that time, our committee said, yes, we would allow you to continue renting, and we don't have a process right now for new rentals going forward. So, I'm speaking to my board and to the people out there, trying to get an understanding on, this is what we're asking for new short-term rentals moving forward. Anybody else that has had a short-term rental in the past can continue with their short-term rental legally as they have before, because there's been no criteria for them. Is that how I understand this?
Uh, I believe what you stated is correct. Uh, I would restate it by saying that anybody who had been operating a short-term rental prior to the announcement of this ordinance back, and I guess it was December, uh, would be what's commonly called grandfathered, but we'll call, uh, pre-existing use. And they would not be subject to the regulations in the short-term rental ordinance.
So nobody's going out there and saying, we have to inspect you and you have to prove this? They, they, they basically, if they've been doing it, they can continue to do it?
Uh, I'm not going to say whether they have permission to do it, but I don't think from a planning and zoning perspective, that we would have any control over what they do.
Okay.
Uh, certainly there's a possibility that, uh, if there's a noise complaint or a trash complaint, which are some of the common things that came up during this discussion, uh, and it was a pre-existing use, therefore not covered by the ordinances, uh, a complainant could raise the issue to the state as to whether or not that was a properly licensed short-term rental. But that's outside the purview of the Planning and Zoning Department.
Thank you.
I, I can also give you, it's RSA 674:19, applying to zoning. A zoning ordinance adopted under RS 67416 shall not apply to the existing structure or to a existing use of any building. So it's by statute in terms of zoning that we can't, so that's.
Now, Linda, if, if the property changes hands, the grandfathering does not follow with the new owner, correct?
I'm not sure about that. I think it does.
I think it does.
Yeah.
Brian, I believe that, uh, if the property changes hands but does not have a change of use.
That's right, that's what.
Then it stays in effect.
So it has to, it has to change hands and have a change of use?
Yes, and, and for the purposes of this discussion, a change of use would be a lack of, uh, short-term rental history for 12 months or more. So if it goes 12 months without having a short-term rental, then they lose that use.
Yep.
Whether it's a change of ownership or not.
Yep. So if they take 13 months off from renting, now they are a new
A new applicant.
New applicant.
That's correct.
Paul? Thanks for doing this. I like the checklist. I really do. It's great. I mean, it's, it's unambiguous as to what you're supposed to do, which is always nice. Um, and I was kind of going along with, uh, John's, um, clarification conversation. But this student body left concern or issue that was raised earlier, about the fact that if you have more than five bedrooms, it don't much matter. You have to comply with ADA. If that in fact is true, um, then those folks are not
It's five rented rooms.
Five rented rooms. I don't know how you
It would have to be a five-unit rental.
I don't know how you, okay.
A five-unit, so you are a building
I own an Adirondack house that has seven bedrooms.
Correct. It wasn't bedrooms, it's like a building. You have a apartment building that had five units.
So I don't know how you square that circle.
Well, I think, Paul, I think the definition would be if you have five or more separate renters or tenants, regardless of the amount of space that they're using.
I don't know, you're correct. Yeah, okay. Uh, but I'm kind of, you know, going along with John, and I feel that the intention here, of course, if the, if this grandpersoning statute applies, is that what you did in the past, you got to do in the past. We have a, we have a, a person in the audience out there in, in the virtual space that wrote us a letter that said, you need to be very concerned about safety, you know, for the grandfathering, uh, aspect of it, and I think that was mentioned last evening in
That's correct.
at Planning Board. Um, presuming that, that, that statute applies, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with John, and that is, if you've done it, you've done it. The ADA thing is something that's a different conversation. And, and I think it would get caught, um, when I say caught, I think it would be picked up if it's a new building. I think it would be picked up during, during the, the building plan, code enforcement officer going, okay, this looks like an ADA. So I, I think we'd catch it at the code level. I'm just responding to your comment about, do we have to put out another warrant? I don't, I wouldn't.
Well, if he was saying he wanted to add ADA requirements in the, um, inspection and stuff, that would have had to
That would trigger it, but
But not in terms of what he's talking about, five units. It was if we were going to, and they're going to go in as part of the checklist. And that was not part of what the warrant article stated, that we were going to go in and check for ADA.
I just figured it's something that the planning board should look at, and because it might be something else that they can use as a mechanism to make sure that, that these units are safe and available for all. My great uncle and my grandfather both started renting up here 90 years ago. Over 90 years ago. Um, and then for, I know, 61 years ago, my parents started renting when they first got married. So renting on waterfront homes, camps, and cottages has gone on forever here. It's not a new, new phenomenon, but it's a phenomenon that has become larger in that it's now encroaching into family neighborhoods and other things. So I understand the need for, for people to want to make sure that short-term rentals are controlled, monitored, understood, and, and that we go forward. And I like this. I think this is a good start, and I think the planning board did a great, a great start this year with the warrant articles.
Thank you, and I would also thank the public for the input that they put dur, in during the process.
Yes, yeah. I'll make another comment here, is that what happens with these short-term rentals have made Bed and Breakfast go out of business. Bed and Breakfast had to go through all the regulations, and, um, and so they, they have, you can watch them. They're just about all gone.
Yeah. That's interesting. Never thought of it.
Well, they're there.
They had to go through
They're there, but they're not Bed and Breakfast anymore. They're just short-term rentals.
With all the life safety and the requirements that they had to go through, they, they have all kind of
Yeah, there's one in town that's closing down now.
Yeah, yeah. It just is, it's just not the way people are doing it.
And those Bed and Breakfast, if they have five individual rentable units in them, need to meet ADA compliance, if they didn't when they were a Bed and Breakfast.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
All right.
Um, do we need a motion?
Yeah, at the bottom of the page, it is a motion to move it to a public hearing on May 21st.
Okay, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on May 21st, 2025, to hear the proposed conditional use permit, short-term rental application fees as follows. One, 300 application fee. Two, public hearing notice, 150.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you on the 24th.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Great seeing you.
All right, next on our general agenda is historical society lease agreement.
Okay, so this is the historical society lease agreement that's in front of you. There was a couple of minor errors within it that needed to be clarified. One of them was under the lease term. Um, it was the date for renewal. That date should be, uh, 2035, not 2045. And I believe Mr. Genu is here to speak on behalf of the agreement. And this was approved, uh, at town meeting in 2024. And with the acceptance of the Bowers donation, this kind of, uh, puts it in alignment for completion.
I'm Gene Denu from the Wolfboro Historical Society. Uh, you have a package in front of you that contains a revised copy of the lease, which we almost had finalized last year. But then the Bowers, uh, graciously donated their fire equipment, which has been in the, uh, firehouse since 1982, to the town. That donation was only finalized a few weeks ago, and that necessitated changes to the lease. Uh, it mainly affected Appendix 3 and 4, which have been properly modified, and, uh, nobody has commented against that. In your package, the, uh, small print copy of the lease that you have has the lawyer's comments in there. On the back are comments made by Linda Murray. And I believe that your package includes comments that I made just this past Monday. Do you have those?
I think I do.
No.
They were emailed to us, I believe. I've seen them. Yeah, here it is on the back. Yes, it is, the last page. Yep, we have them.
No, that would, the last page on my copy is the
No, the page
Email.
It's in our pocket.
No, that's the email that, uh, you wrote. Uh, I have a
Oh, this is
Couple of extra copies here.
Oh, this is yours.
By Amy, as you requested.
Yeah, from Gene Denu.
By Amy, as you requested, here's the lease changes after the town has accepted the Bowers fire equipment. Is that the email you sent us?
No.
I see. That's okay.
I have this one. I read, she, she emailed to us here.
No, we don't have it.
I, I know, I think it was emailed to us.
I don't see those comments there.
I've seen those. They've come through.
Okay, let me go over some of the details. The lawyer questioned where the quotation in, on page one, sub-paragraph one, ended. And I've indicated that it ended on the next-to-last line after the word "at." And the, uh, the word "for" in there, before the capital "it," should be deleted. That's just a stray word. The problem with going over these documents with new people and, uh, reading them in detail is a lot of typos are being found. Most of the problems are simply typos. The only major change was the Bowers donation. The, uh, other comment that I had was on paragraph four, where it describes who owns the contents. The, the words "except those owned by the lesser" were left out. Those were in the previous version of last year. And that refers to the appendix, which indicates that certain of the equipments are not owned by the lessie, they're owned by the town, and that is the fire equipment. I did ask Amy to check that the attorney had no comments to the appendices, and he did not. She informed me of that verbally.
So when it says paragraph six, after buildings add "except those owned, be the leaser," that's supposed to be "by the leaser?" Mine says "except those owned, be the leaser."
I'm not sure where you are here.
I'm on, I'm on this, right here. It says, page, on, on, says page four, does yours say "owned, be the leaser"? You just said "by the leaser." I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. Is that a typo also?
Yeah, the, uh, "leasie" is the sole owner of the contents of the buildings. Except those owned by
By.
By.
By, yeah. There you go.
Yep.
Yeah, the "lessie" is the sole owner of the contents. That's us.
Yep.
Except for those owned by the lesser, and that's explained to be the fire equipments and a few items in the schoolhouse. Uh, Linda Murray's comments on the last page. She agreed with the lawyer that the quotation mark is missing. I've explained where that should be. Uh, I'm gonna skip the date for just a moment. She picked up a typo on Appendix four, and that is correct. And let's take a look at the lease terms, which Linda has questioned on
Page three.
Page three. She's questioned why it says 2225, and actually the last lease said 2226. The origin of that date is 2026 is when our 99-year lease expires. It was convenient to have the new one start at the end of that. However, the desire for a new lease is not simply based on the fact that the old one is expiring. It's based on the mishmash of items that are listed in the beginning, where we have a number of legal documents governing how the historical society and the town run the museum. Those articles are confusing, out of date, and the whole purpose of this lease is to combine them into one. Remember that when the first lease occurred, the Clark House was a vacant building with no electricity, no water, no telephone, no digital communications, and that kind of And that kind of information continued with the schoolhouse in 1959 and even the firehouse in 1982. While we have a working agreement with the town, and I'm saying this for the benefit of you new people on the board. The working agreement, especially concerning the barn, which was donated to the town and accepted in 2018, the working agreement is not documented. We don't even have a piece of paper that says we're allowed to run the barn. So it's actually more important to have this lease signed and authorized than the date. And since it combines all the information that would have been needed from the 99-year lease, we're willing to change it to 2025 as a start date, as Linda has suggested. The fact that there's a one-year overlap is of no concern because a 99-year lease would be superseded. And I'm getting awfully tired of standing up here before the board and other people because it's been six and a half years since we first asked for a lease. We asked for the new lease, combining everything, a few months after the barn was accepted. In that time, we've gone through three town managers, two of whom did nothing. Our present town manager was the first one to take action. We've gone through multiple boards and several town attorneys. So we're comfortable with signing the lease now. And that means that the dates have to be corrected in Item 2, the lease term, and Item 3, the rent which duplicates it. The, starting with the first date, July 30 of 2025 is fine. The next one, then, should read 2035 instead of 36. And in that same sentence, maybe extended for a 10-year term. Following July 29, that should be 2035. And the last date, if mutually agreed by both parties, which says 2046, makes absolutely no sense at all. It should be prior to the end of the July 29, 2035 date. Then the same changes have to be made under rent. Change it to 2025 and 2035. And with those changes, I believe we are 100% ready to issue the final draft. With any future corrections only being typos.
Jim, you have that information?
I think I have it, and I should be able to have it finalized tomorrow and get an electronic version out to everybody.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything, make a motion at this point? Or is it just go, once we get the final, just is? That's the final, and then we go in and sign it because it was accepted by the taxpayers?
Yeah, I think that's correct, Linda.
Okay.
Do you want to make that a motion so that we can sign it? We wanted to bring it back to another meeting.
Okay, that, I move that when the town manager has a updated and final version of the lease, that the Board of Selectmen will go in and sign the lease.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
And Amy will call us and herself and our president, Libby Shannon.
Somebody will be inducted in.
Signed it for the Wolfboro Historical Society.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
What do you oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Josiah Brown Scholarship Award guideline update.
So we wanted to update the Josiah Brown Scholarship to try and attract more people while as well following the rules established by the fund. So Amy went through and worked with some different schools and got information regarding where they're at with combined incomes. And combined income shall not exceed 350% of the federal property guidelines for 2025, which is reflected in the families of one through a family of eight. And the income levels, which you can see last year's, which we, I think, updated in 2022, are out of date. So we'd like to be able to update this to get this scholarship out.
Anybody have any questions for Jim?
Nope.
Thank Amy for doing it, for sure. We needed to get that done.
We need a motion to update the requirements for the Josiah Brown Scholarship application.
I'll second that.
That's what I was going to do.
I'd just second the motion.
So move second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Amy.
Next thing on our agenda is Libby trustees meeting.
I'll make a motion that we go into a Libby trustees meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a request for funds, $5,000 for an engineering study for repair. Somebody's going to speak to us about this, Dave?
Steve Wolfold, Chair of the Wolfboro Heritage Commission and a member of the Libby Subcommittee. I'm sorry, I could just see earlier, Libby. This is at 6:30. This is a, these are copies of the engineering proposals.
Thank you.
There's a lot of engineers who address.
A new one. New engineering company. They're all getting into it.
Maybe just a little bit of background if, to help everybody remember what was, what's already been presented to you guys. Couple of months ago, H.L. Turner gave us pricing, or gave you folks pricing for doing stamp plans for addressing all the issues surrounding the Libby. Roof, walls. That price tag came in for, at $58,520 for just the engineering on that. We asked, or Jim asked for an adjusted approach to just provide pricing for temporary bracing of the building. And on, I believe, March, March 4th, they came in with a price of $15,640 for a temporary bracing plan. Nothing more than bracing that would stop the building from falling down, but not sufficient bracing for doing any repairs. In the meantime, our committee's been talking with contractors who are quite interested in helping us. And we've come up with a different approach for you guys to consider. We're suggesting that we start approaching this on a more of a critical path of what's the first thing that we should be doing. I think everybody agrees that's the North Wall. The North Wall is falling down. It's at risk, and we should, we should just focus on that. So some of the, some of the companies and people that have been interested in helping us are Rick Geddes Building Moving. He's probably the premier building mover in the state. Some of you guys have dealt with him directly. He has this affection for the Libby, and he's offering his services, or his company's services. And he has worked regularly with the engineer that you have the proposal in front of you. This proposal is offering you stamped plans for addressing and for bracing and providing the needed support while the North Wall is addressed. That price is $500 for a site inspection and $5,000 for a set of plans that will have an engineer stamp at the end of it with a full process of moving forward and a full set of plans for anybody who wants, who's engaged in the process to safely start removing the wall. Because that's kind of the approach that we're looking at, is just take it one piece at a time. I think the numbers work out better. The approach makes more sense because we don't know if fixing the North Wall may fix problems that we're seeing on the roof, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just, to me, it's bite-sized, it's tangible, and it works. So let me just tell you a little bit what, what that would. Oh, and just one more, one more thing. We have gotten one price from a bracing company in Massachusetts who was willing to come up and give us a price for temporary bracing. The company is called Brand Safeway. They've worked in the area before. Their price for bracing, temporary bracing, was $37,000 with a $4,500 a month rental fee for the equipment as it stays on-site or as it's needed. So.
Could you say that again? What was the monthly?
$4,500. $4,500 a month to have the equipment on-site as sort of a lease rental. Because it would be, it would be, a lot of this is steel bracing. It's different than, H.L. Turner talked about some wood bracing, which was going to be cheaper. I'm not trying to say this is the best deal we could get, but it was a deal, it was the price that I got. I thought would be helpful for you guys to understand where we're at. So in a nutshell, what I'm asking to do is for you folks to approve the $5,500 to provide, to do the site inspection and the engineering for, for the North Wall. At that point, milestone construction has agreed to come up with project costs for doing the rest of the repairs, for the, for taking, and what we're, I don't want to get too involved, but a lot of complicated expensive issues about bracing that wall on the outside or the inside. And we're proposing to brace it directly underneath the wall. So we don't have angled bracing all the time. The bracing, we would take sections of the wall apart, say 15 to 20-foot sections, brace that part with a direct bearing post at the identified spots by the engineer, obviously. But just if we, if we remove and repair and replace a section of the wall at a time and just keep moving down the wall, it makes bracing a whole lot easier. So the site inspection would require that we remove about a six-foot panel because the engineer wants to verify that the foundation is adequate to support the load. Because if the foundation is crumbling, there's no point. So we would be removing a section of the interior wall to expose and verify that the foundation is intact. And there's also issues with the top of the wall. It's my opinion that there's two sets of, there are two roof systems. There's a roof system and then a vaulted ceiling below it. And a lot of that needs to be, the engineer needs to understand what that's all about. So we can, so we're going to open up a section at the top of the wall so we can understand the bearing points that he can use.
Can I, can I, so what's he calling the foundation?
The foundation is that slab that we've seen on the North Wall on the outside. That cap that we saw is the, is the top of, is the foundation, is the top of the foundation. There is no wood wall below that point.
Right. It's concrete below that, that five feet, five and a half feet, whatever.
Well, that's just, that's just cement board.
It's, well.
It goes along, and then it steps up and goes along where the back door is and stuff.
If the floor, the floor, the floor doesn't bear, or the wall doesn't go all the way to the floor.
Mr. Chairman, just to respond to John, I have no idea what's going on back there. I think we don't know what we don't know. That's the big, that's the big, ooh, we don't know. So I'm kind of listening intently to this by saying, we're kind of doing, we're going to pay somebody to give us a plan to excavate forensically and figure out what we'll have to deal with.
Actually, we're going to, the excavation, the demolition.
Yeah.
It's part of the plan. That's the first step.
Forensic, forensic look, see what's going on back there.
That's.
Because I don't, I don't think we know what we know. We don't know what's going on in that system. We do know that it's got a big belly, bigger, you know, that needs to be dealt with. So my only, I'll shut up here. The only thing I'm missing here on this piece of paper is when. There's no, like, like next Thursday, we'll get a plan, a week from Monday.
Very soon.
A year from Tuesday.
Both the engineer and Rick Geddes are anxious to help with this. And this part of the part, the part where we can get to a point where we have an assessed situation that can be then priced out, I think will happen within the next month and a half.
So that's 45, that's 45 days to get this.
Yep.
Okay, and then, and I'm, I'm jumping ahead, but we're using the word milestone engineering. Jim, have we settled that milestone is the contractor of record here?
No, well.
No.
This is, this is just people reaching out to us, quite honestly.
What I'm, what I'm trying to do is I'm just trying to line up the, the people who are going to be signed up to do the work and put dates along that so that we don't, so that we can confirm to the public and our 90-day now obligation to the state that we're actually doing something. And that's not, that's not on you, okay?
I hear you.
You know, I don't want people going, yeah, but when? And we go, well, we don't know. So first things first, I, I'm kind of supportive of getting in there and poking around and seeing what we're dealing with. As long as, you know, we feel comfortable that spending $5,500, which I don't know where we're going to get the money. Jim will have to help us here. I'm not concerned about that. I just want to know what we're dealing with and move on.
It's a great question, and it's a great answer that you need.
Thank you.
Between the SROTH fund and, don't we have over $300,000 still?
Yeah, I would suggest you consider the SROTH account because that's unlimited.
So that's an unrestricted fund.
And there's $70,000 in the SROTH fund now?
No, I, we'd have to get, I think.
There's enough. I think it's 30, whatever it is, there's enough. So my only ask is, you know, assuming you get, you get assent here, you know, get a date. 45 days is a long time.
I had to tell Rick that you wanted to come and start opening up the wall last week. And I said, Rick, I can't open up the town's building without the permission.
So what happens after you open up the wall?
Then that gives the engineer the data that he needs to create a load-bearing plan.
So we're just gonna, so, so we're not going to do anything with the building, the structure, the underside, the foundation? We're not going to do any of that. We're just going to open the wall up and view it to come up with a cost estimate and.
Well, no, more than a cost estimate. You'll get a working plan from this architect, from this engineer at this point. That $5,500 gives you a roadmap to repairing the North Wall, basically, is what it does. It doesn't give you a price list of what it's going to cost to do that, but it gives you a roadmap.
So then you can take those plans and you can take them to different builders or repair companies and say.
Whatever the town decides they want us to do, but I think we have a pretty.
What would you charge? What would you charge? What would you charge? What would you charge to shore up this wall?
I mean, the $5,500 is really just encompassing the data that needs to be collected for the, for the working plan.
And to get a working plan that's stamped. That's gotten us to that point. That's a big step forward in my mind.
No different than what H.L. Turner was asking $18,000 for.
Correct.
The same thing.
And we will know far more than we know right now about how to move forward and put together. together any future plan.
The trustees need to know that we will be making a six-foot hole inside the Libby museum to expose the foundation and another size hole up top.
So when you open the hole up, the hole's going to be opened up and then it's going to be left open?
It's going to left... Yes. There's no price in here for repairing anything that we take apart. And this plan, just in case you... This plan incorporates keeping the collection in the museum, not moving it offsite, but moving it forward to the first half of the museum and creating a curtain wall to isolate the collection from the workspace.
So are we concerned about critters getting into the museum and compromising the collection?
Well, we want to spend $170,000 to... I mean, we're talking about competent employees.
I mean, if we think the collection is worth anything and then we're going to open the wall up and we're going to have squirrels and mice and other things going in there, then it's something to consider.
I respect these people. There are ways to close up the building every night before they leave. I mean, we're not talking about leaving it open to the elements. Of course not. That's a security issue. That's... But so the building would never have been left unprotected overnight.
I think John raises a fair question and you raise a fair answer. It would be not responsible by anybody to poke a hole in the wall, let bugs and people get in there. So, you know, the assumption is going to be that if you poke a hole in the wall, somebody's going to seal it up.
Yeah.
From the security... And I respect the question, but I think, you know, common sense would say, "We're not going to leave this thing open so that, you know, a bird can or I can jump in the way."
Right. I mean, there's a collection that has some value in there. We certainly wouldn't...
I look at this, again, my... I had the advantage of meeting with these folks a while back. And I think you and Dave, when we're down there, so maybe you can fill us in it. We got to know what we're dealing with. The question in my mind, and I think the question for prospective trustees, is repair or replica? That's really the question that people are teeing up. Is it a restoration or is it a replication? And we really, you know, I think prospective donors need to know what they're going to have to deal with. First things first, that wall is in deep poo-poo and we got to figure out how to secure that building. We can't let the collection be compromised, and I think you guys know that. But first things first, we got to get inside and figure out what's going on behind the cement board or what's going on underneath.
So importantly to me is we've used the town, many engineering companies, many construction companies over the years. Sometimes we get burned. Sometimes things work well for us. I spend a day and a half when I buy something for $15 to make sure that I'm buying a reputable, good-quality product. How were these people vetted? Are you happy with them? Do you like the company? Have you seen the work that they do? Are they good? Are they going to give us what we need?
Rick Geddes has moved churches. He's moved brick... Three-story brick buildings. He's not... He's never had a failure. So I respect Rick. And Rick's engineer is this fellow that you have the report from. So these two, these two key people that will come up with a game plan and Rick will make sure it doesn't fall down while it's being...
So is this the gentleman that we met that day?
Aaron Sturgis is the gentleman we met the other day, the last... And he would be the contractor. So we're trying to bring him on board as the carpenters on-site to do the wood framing rebuild.
So these gentlemen are going to do this for pro bono?
No, they're not doing it pro bono. They're just offering their services and they're saying they will... Rick Geddes at least is saying he will treat us right. Aaron Sturgis we're still negotiating with. He's on a one-month motorcycle trip across the country, so we have to wait till June to talk to him. But there are other people. If Aaron doesn't want to do it... Aaron has worked... The advantage to Aaron is he's always... He installed the steel collar ties at the top of the wall and he's repaired the basement piers, so he knows the building. And he's sensitive to historic buildings. And he asked to come out to look at it.
I'm apprehensive knowing that the walkabout during that day to go around that building and look and try to say, "What is still good with this building?" And the only thing that I could come up with was a little bit of flooring that was inside the building that was the only thing that wasn't compromised in the building. So when you say you want to shore up the back wall, I mean, I don't want to say you're being disingenuous, but it's not really given us a fair, full-scope picture to say, "Look, this is really what the rest of the costs are going to be." It's just, you know, I feel like we're being baited along to spend $5,500 to put the worm on the hook. I'm sorry.
What's your choice?
So with that being said, respectfully, with that being said, what do you want to do?
I mean, I want the full... I want the full number for the whole thing that's going to cost.
So with that being said, are you suggesting... Now I'm baiting you. With that being said, are you suggesting you want to do the full Monty and have a... Who are the characters? Which one of these characters? Quantum? Do we want to get another Quantum study? Because we're talking serious numbers here.
Well...
Is that what you want to do?
I want to prove the theory to say, "Look, this is the full number. We don't have the money for the full number." I mean, for us to say, "Yeah, we've got a small amount of money," it doesn't... I mean, we're being... We're not being truthful to the voters to say, "Oh, we're going to open the wall up" and then... But really what we want to do is we want to build this thing back up to something...
We don't... We haven't put a plan together. This is step one to try to figure out what to do on that back wall. I mean, I can tell you, we can give you a plan to redo the whole Libby museum. We have that. That went down. The voters didn't support that. We have X amount of money. We need to come up with a plan, but we also have to have an understanding of what's going on with the building. And that back wall has been one of the main areas. And so to me, to go and investigate that and spend this type of money and have some kind of an idea what's going on there, you know, they attach the addition to the Libby on that back wall. So that back wall has been something they've been looking at. I'd like to know what's going on in that back wall. That back wall may tell us exactly what we need to do or what we can't do here.
See, I'm... John, I'm kind of in the same space. I mean, do the math. We got 320, roughly speaking, in the Capital Reserve Fund, somewhere between 35 and 55 in the SROTH. I don't know if we can drain that thing. I think we can. That's it. We're out of Schlitz. So we got, you know, I may be off by 10 or 20 grand. We got $370,000 bucks. That's it. Voters have said no one, two, three times. We can't go back to the voters and say, "We got this big Quantum idea." Not picking on Quantum. We got this big Quantum idea. This is going to go to successor trustees. My personal opinion. I probably am wrong. Most of the time I am. This is going to successor trustees. I think we open up that back wall. We understand what we're dealing with. Successor trustees are going to look at that and go, "We're going to have to raise..." My math. We're going to have to raise $5 million to replicate or repair, restore, whatever it is, and set them on their way. So I think first things first, get that wall opened up. You got to do it safely. We're not going to have bugs and birds flying in. Get the wall opened up, take a look around, and go from there.
I'm listening to what you're saying. I'm just thinking about the voters that are sitting there watching us saying they gave us direction. And you folks are doing a lot of legwork and I respect that, and you're trying, but again, we're not conveying what the end message is going to be. If we've only got $300,000, they're sitting home going, "What are they doing?"
We're going to spend $5,500 to find out what's really going on in the back of the museum.
Okay.
And that's what I've wanted to do for quite a few months, is to open that wall up and see what's inside of it.
Okay.
I can tell you that that building is probably braced to the hilt in the corners because that's the way they built them in those times. When I first started working here in town, we braced everything in the corners. I mean, whether we were plywood-ing it or not, it was braced because the old Frenchman I worked for, he said, "We're going to brace that." And that's what they used to do. But we should be able to see, once that's open, to the left and to the right as far as what's going on. We'll know exactly how wide that space is. We can guess at the bottom and at the top. Until we open it up, that could be even greater in the middle. We don't know that.
And I think the Attorney General is asking us, is asking us within 90 days to have a good decision of what the building is. Can it be fixed? How much is it going to cost to be fixed? What's our plan? We have to exhaust all of our avenues and make sure that we try and save... It's our job as trustees.
Thank you. I think the people wanted to hear just what you just said.
And we're on track to do that. This $5,500 will help Milestone to give us a cost estimate for repairing that back wall. And that's what we need to bring back to you, to bring to the Attorney General's office, to share with the friends of the Libby Museum, and to begin to start our decision-making process as to where we go next.
So Meg...
I think there's real concern that that wall is very unstable.
Ah, heck, you know that.
But you know what? We heard that last December. The building is still standing.
So Maggie, I kind of agree with most of what you said. The only thing I asked Jim, "Do we have a contractor of record?" The answer is no, so we have to be cautious to not use Milestone's name here. They'll be a contractor.
That's true.
Okay, so that's part one. And part two, I'd go along with you and I would, you know, I'd probably sing along and, "Dave, we need a date. This is when they're going to get, you know, do that so that this doesn't become, in my words, amorphous, kind of an expanding universe of costs." Okay.
I think everybody that we've talked to so far understands the urgency.
Then there should be a date on this.
And the immediacy of this.
Okay.
To be completed by.
And the people we've talked to are very eager to step up and get the work done, I think.
And the third and last point, and then I will be quiet, and I know I should. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that very much. Is I asked Jim, and I've said this to the public, I asked Jim a few weeks back, and he's ruminating on this, the $300,000, 320, 300, whatever the number is in the Capital Reserve Fund, the Warren article that was put to the public that they approved was for repair...
Maintenance.
And maintenance of the facility. So what I did to Jim, and Dave has a copy of it as our chair, I sent him a note and I said, "Jim, take that 350. Can it be used for..." And I just articulated just a number of questions. Take the exhibits out. Do this, do these things. And I'd love to come back, and I think he's working on that. We want to come back and say, "Well, yeah, you got 320 grand, but you can only use it for these things." So we may have less money to spend... Now this gets back to John's point. Less money to spend than we really think we got. So this idea of doing the Big Bang Theory study, I don't think that's going to fly. Personal opinion.
I think we also need, and there may even be the word renovate in there. I'd like to see the Warren article the way it is written, but the SROTH fund is not... We can use it wherever we had. So we have a cushion to work around if there are some issues that we don't think fall in the Warren article. We have this other pot of money to use, so...
Well, I think that no matter what, we have or can have access to at least $5,500 to do this.
Absolutely.
Okay? So I think we need to ask ourselves, are we willing to spend $5,500 to find out what's going on in the wall? And my answer is yes, I think we should.
Should I put a motion out and see how?
I would. That was my next...
Can I ask a question first?
No.
Yes. I got to direct this to you, Dave, I think. So when I look at the scope of services and I look at the tasks, it says exclude any demolition. There's going to be costs associated with the demolition that you just explained up in the ceiling and on the floor level. Do we have any idea who and how much that's going to cost?
It's... Don't... I think it's being provided by Geddes as a courtesy.
So that leads to...
I will verify that.
That leads to step two or task two. Geddes and everything that is being assumed here, Geddes is not going to be invoicing Boogal engineering or the town of Wolfboro?
No. Not why... Not for this, for the... For opening the wall, he conveyed to me that that was something that he would do for us. He would open up the wall.
So we would need that in writing, then?
Yes. I think that's what we're getting at.
See, that's why you have that curmudgeon over there, all right? Because in addition to using that contractor, Geddes, you've now just asserted that they're the person that's going to be involved in future work. And I want to make sure we're really clear. When we do this, we have to... I hate to sound like a bureaucrat because I don't... I'm not particularly fond of us when we do this. But we got to make sure that we can stand up to the voter and say, "We didn't just put our arm around somebody and say, 'Help us out.'" Can't do that.
Well, I think it's very clear even in the proposal that the engineer is only interested in this project if he's partners with Rick Geddes. So you tell me what you want from Rick Geddes as a protection for you guys or further clarification.
But the fact is, as Brian said, we need to number this up. We need to engine...
Well, we need another piece of paper outlining what Geddes is going to do.
Okay.
So that we know whether it has any cost or if it's free so we can know about the demolition and make sure that there isn't any cost that we don't see here.
Right. I mean...
And I'm concerned, but I'm not a naysayer on this project. I'm always for the underdog. There was $2.1 or $2.2 million that was raised at one time to build a $4 million museum. I think that there could be another fundraise that comes forward with $2-point-something million again to just rebuild the museum.
Maggie and the rest of the team have been working with friends and...
And I think that's possible. And I think until we know how much it's going to cost to rebuild this building and make sure that we've given the people who want one last chance to raise the funds, I think after that, I think then we're going to have to think of something else. But I think that based on what the Attorney General, the Trust Division of the Attorney General's Office has told us and the people we have in front of us, I think it's one more time to see if it can be done without costing the taxpayers $1 million like it was going to cost last time.
Just to clarify, I mean, we're not just one more study. What you're paying, what you're agreeing to pay for right now is a working plan.
Correct.
You have never been given a working plan by anybody, but you spent a lot of money to get your studies.
That's right.
Yeah. And from this, where we go, what the structure's going to be, I think we all here on the board feel that it's time for the town no longer to be the trustees. And how we come about moving that along, this may be step one in that process of knowing what we have in terms of a building.
I completely agree with you.
And that we will help us answer what the Trust Division of the Attorney General Office is asking from us. So this gives me a direction.
Honestly, it also gives you a number to say... When you look at the number, you say that we're not willing to spend that. And then you've spent the $5,500 and you've said, "We're not going any further." That's your call.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Well, I think we ought to either approve this $5,500 or...
Yeah, I think we can approve the $55,000, $5,500 along with the information from the mover on the demolition. What was the other thing, Jim? There was one other thing.
The shoring. I think it was shoring. Items in task two.
I think it would be easy to say, "We will approve the $5,500 contingent upon no additional costs for demolition, construction, anything."
Second. Second.
Well, well, doesn't that come down to this page where it says dispute resolution, any claim or dispute between the claim and BNG shall be submitted to non-binding mediation subject to the parties agreeing to a moderator unless otherwise specified. This agreement shall be governed by the laws of the principal's place of business of B E N G. It's like it's, I mean, they're giving us a, they're giving us a disclaimer that something might come up, so we're, I mean-
We just, but we just made a motion and seconded it-
I get it.
-that says, we're okay authorizing the expenditure of $5,500 with the, with the complete and clear understanding, no further costs for demolition or other things will be incurred by the town of Wolfboro.
And if that doesn't happen?
All bets off.
All bets off. That's it.
We're packing the truck up and we're leaving.
So this, so this won't apply?
Well, there's always a disclaimer on just about anything you do.
That boilerplate that you signed. Jim's seen that clause before, at least.
Yes, I would just say, I would recommend we have Nathan review the contract.
So add to the motion.
Well, it was your motion.
To, yes, add to the motion to have counsel review and to approve $5,500 and not a penny more.
I will, I think we should add this to approve it upon approval or okay from town attorney.
I just said that.
He just said that.
Oh, I didn't hear him say that. I was thinking about that.
I'll resecond that. Now, we had, we have a member of the public that wants to speak. Mr. Chairman, what do you want to do about that?
What do you guys want to do?
She has two minutes. Two minutes.
We have a member of the public that wants to speak.
And I'm watching my phone.
We haven't agreed, we haven't agreed to anything yet.
Suzanne Ryan.
We haven't agreed to anything.
I don't think so. Whatever. I know it's stressful for you to entertain the public, but again, you don't have bylaws as to how you're going to run your trustees meeting, so I have to kind of go like this. The agenda says $5,000 for engineering study for repair. It doesn't, it hasn't clarified to me that this $5,000 is going to include a cost estimate for the total repair of that back wall, if it can even be repaired, which I don't believe it can.
That's what we're going to find out with this money.
Well, you know what? You can get a good contractor in this town, and I'm sure you know a few, that can go in on the interior, take a big section of that plaster out, and look inside. You're going to find nothing there. It's rotten. To spend $5,000 is foolishness. You're chasing your tail and you're giving false hope to the public that, oh, if we spend $5,000 and we do this study, we can save it. Well, guess what? You're not talking about the front wall. The front wall is in dire condition. We know the whole building's moving, the laser reports have told you that building is moving, the tie rods haven't been tightened for a long time. The ALBA report did do, they did two studies, I mean, you've had like eight studies done on this building, you're kidding the public when you say you don't know what condition that back wall is in. You know, you know, you're, you've done contracting work, you too know, you've done hands-on contracting work, you know that back wall is a lost cause. And the ALBA report did the analysis, and they did the studies of the wall, the movement and full condition analysis. The building, it, I wouldn't want to be sitting where you're sitting, believe me.
Two minutes.
But I think there are those of you that know the building is a lost cause. And I think the ALBA report suggested somewhere in there that it would be as cost-effective, if not cheaper, to take that building down and replace it with a steel frame and use some of the elements of that building to make it look historic. The building is not a historic design by a historic noted architect. It was a guy that was a dentist who decided he wanted to build something from the, from the trees across on the lake to build something for his, put his boats in with a dream of having a museum. It isn't historic like this building is. It's not worth it. It's just not worth it. But if you want to waste $5,000 to make it easy for you to say to people, oh-
That's right.
That can't be salvaged. And to do it section by section by section, that's a fool's errand. So I think I hear the majority of you saying you're going to go forward and spend the $5,000, but I would hope that if it does, it will give you the cost estimate to repair that whole building. I don't think Sturgis is going to do that. I don't, that's not his, I don't think that's his forte. His forte is rotten structures and rehabilitating them, but it's too bad. I think it's just a waste.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay. Now, we need a motion to come out of trustees meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is old business. Anybody have any old business?
And just, we don't need to do anything to have the trustees recommended a select board, that we're just passing it away through. No objection to that?
It was part of the motion.
Good, okay.
Any old business? None? Any other business?
Yes, I have one. Other business, I was down at the town docks and I bumped into-
Oh, what's his name?
Yeah, I can't remember.
Nate Nichols.
No, it wasn't Nate, it was Mr. De Beers.
Excuse me.
I bumped into Mr. De Beers and I was looking at the trash in the water, and I ended up asking him, because I knew his family dived, if they would consider cleaning, help cleaning up the trash at the town docks that are, that's in the water from the winter and from last fall and whatnot. And he said, you know what would be a better idea, Brian? And I said, what? He goes, why don't you ask the Wolfboro Fire Department to come do their dive training there and see if they'll clean up all the trash there? And I talked to, first to Frank Vellaflor and then to Nate Nichols, and they said, absolutely, we would love to come down. They have it tentative for nine o'clock on Monday, the 19th, to do their dive training and to, they said they will bring contractor bags, take all the trash out of the whole dock areas. And I told them that I would see if I could get Alyssa Parkett to go down, take a picture, and put a little piece in the newspaper for their service. And I just figured before I went to Jim and asked Jim if Jim could just take care of this, if I, if the board wanted to support it.
I would like to support it.
Yep, sure. Okay. Is there any other business?
So to that point, Brian, we used to have, we used to have a day when divers went down there and did, did the big cleanup, all the way from the river, all the way out in front, all that area. They dragged out tires and steel and all kinds of other things.
All the paddles that fell off, the canoes from the Smith River race.
Yeah.
So that must have been before your time in town here.
Yeah, I've heard that Dive Winnebaski has volunteered in the past, but I figured that this would be a good parlay to have our fire department that has to do their dive training anyways. Jim, do you want to contact them to confirm with them or?
Yep, I will reach out to them tomorrow.
Anybody wants to come down and help, I'll be down there. I don't dive, but I'll be picking up trash.
I think it would be precious to see you with a snorkel and fins. I mean, snapshots of that.
Somebody pushes you in, you have to work.
Are you going down?
Okay, town managers report?
Not much really to report. I just got back from a two-week sabbatical, spent a lot of time with family, which was nice. On another point, we're in the final stages of hiring a town planner. We're in the final stages of hiring a code enforcement officer, and I think both will be wonderful fits for the community. I'm hopeful that at the next board meeting, I'll be able to announce the names and start dates. That's all I have.
Okay, committee reports. John?
Why didn't you start at the other end first?
Why? Didn't you have some meetings? Okay, Brian?
You can pass. We had two sidewalk committee meetings, Linda and I, and I met with Jim today and showed him the recommendations from the sidewalk committee to the recommendations from the Board of Selectmen.
Select Board.
Select Board. And so when, when we take in, we, when Jim gets it all put together, he will be bringing it back to us so that we can have a public hearing and have more input on it. We also have, we had a meeting on, our workshop on docks and wharfs, and I know more now about the barge services and the commercial use of every single set of docks around Lake Winnebaski, more than I ever want to know. And then I had the couple of calls with the fire department to set up this cleaning of the dock areas. And that's it.
Paul?
What? Oh, I'm sorry. So I, I had a meeting with the Friends of the Libby Museum and the committee, the ad hoc team, a week and a half ago, and it was, it was a pleasant conversation. I mean, it really was. They're, they're trying to find a way to work together. The Friends of the Libby also are, have an obligation to respond to the Attorney General's Office because they have standing, they have money, they have, and I'm not going to quote their numbers, let's throw them to do it, and they are a 501(c) fundraising. The bright line issue between the two teams right now, it's, it's beginning time, so it's good. One team says replicate the Libby, another team says restore the Libby. We'll let them kind of crash around on this. So, and to John Thurston, that's why my passion is here about, let's get, let's know what we're dealing with, because it might inform those two teams as to what, how to prosecute a path towards getting a resolution on this thing. And it's not, personally, it's not misleading voters, my personal opinion. I attended the planning board meeting last evening, it was great to be back with those I won't break you on, on what's going on. Yes, I, I attended the work session on fees. I think that was a good news, bad news situation. The good news is I learned a lot too. The bad news is I'm getting a lot of phone calls, emails, from people saying, please spend that quality of time, that quantity of time on, on your budgets. That was kind of the snarky comment, but good, good input from people, good input. I've also visited with the Police Commission. Our beloved chief is back from his, his arm surgery, and so he's on limited duty, but he's back online, so welcome back, Chief Warren. That's all I have to report.
Okay, I'll do one that we all went to.
Oh, yeah.
I joined the board at a meeting with the state of New Hampshire on the process the town must follow for the reevaluation of the lots. It looks like the higher-end properties are more undervalued than the lower-end properties. Wolfboro Waters had a table at the First Congregational Church Environmental Sunday, and I worked with, at the Wolfboro Waters table answering questions, and I'll add this for Brian.
Yep.
The Energy Committee were there also. I attended two Wolfboro Waters Assessment Subcommittee meetings. One was just the regular meeting, the other one was their annual gathering when they bring the lake associations from Winnebaski, Meere Lake, Wentworth Watershed, and Russ Pond together, and talk about what they did in 2024 and what their plans are for 2025. And it's very interesting, neither Meere Lake nor Russ Pond had a Sinobacteria outbreak in 2024, nor has Russ Pond ever had one, so. Last night, Wolfboro 2025, we met, we're starting to book entertainment and talking about the different venues. I attended two ad hoc sidewalk committees with Brian. I attended the monthly meeting of the Wolfboro Historical Society with the Russ Pond Associations and members from the Wolfboro Waters Committee. I walked, went up to the high school and we looked at the drainage pipe coming out of the complex, which is sending the water behind the houses on Pleasant Valley. We did this prior to sitting down this coming Thursday and talk with the superintendent of schools and take a look at the drainage and exactly what's going on. So I think that should be a good conversation. One of the things we did notice that the school district had done a lot of work of taking care of their water and doing filtration on the property, but from that, it gets shot down the hill in the woods to pick up all the nutrients on its way to, on its way to Russ Pond. So we'll, I'll give you more information on that after we meet with the superintendent of schools. And I think that there was others than just me that attended the New Hampshire Municipal Association Seminar on RSA 91A.
It was great.
And I think that was Paul, and, and you did, John, right?
Yep.
That's all I have.
And by the way, Linda, if I couldn't interrupt your, one of the things we did learn yesterday in that, in that Right to Know class, and we probably should pass it on to the ad hoc team at the, of the heritage of the, of the Libby folks, is that they have an obligation to post minutes-
Yeah.
-and post meetings.
Yes.
That, I don't, I don't know if they've done that. You know, we did that for the ad hoc ambulance, but they, they are required because they are appointed by this board, and so they are required to post their, notice their minute, notice their meetings and post their minutes. So we got to get that message out to them. Maybe Amy can pass that along.
And I think it's called even working committees, and that was one I wasn't sure beforehand, but working committees going to, so I'm going to need to do some stuff on that.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm glad I went.
Yeah.
Learned some stuff.
I need to add one quick one, too. Heritage Awards, May 29, 5:30 reception. Awards start at 6:15 at the Village Players.
Yeah.
Right down the road from here.
And they teased a picture of what they think might be the winner. It was good.
So, that's, that's a great event. I go every year and, and it's a really nice event.
All right, I went to the state revale meeting with the rest of you. We had a work session. Are you ready now, John?
I am. So on, on Friday, I met with Chuck Sumner to walk the bike trails up behind Filterbed Road. We spent two and a half, almost three hours up there walking the trails and, and the, and it was a real good, real good walk. I think there's, there's going to be some, some very beneficial terrain up there where people can ride, and it was nice to see that somebody's going to be able to enjoy those woods up there. And there's, there are a couple wet areas up there that, you know, when the, when the builder comes, I think we're going to have to look at some areas that are going in through some vernal pools. I think there was a, there was a trail up there that, that they made them remove some stuff because they, there was a conception that the, that the bridge was on top of the wall, but it was, the discussion came down to whether or not the interior wall could be touched, and it was told to them that the interior wall could not be touched, but from my perspective, in my history, it's the boundary walls that are not allowed to be touched, and the interior walls can be touched. So there's, there's some discrepancy on that one, but it was, it was really good. There were no bugs. And so we did go to the Right to Know yesterday, and that was very informative. And last but not least, I went to the Police and Fire Building to meet with Chief Zadi, and I had a real good conversation with the chief in talking about his budget and where the budgets were going, his personnel, and, and how the recruitment process was going for the new deputy ambulance service director, and, and the interviews that were going to transpire with the other candidates for the hands-on aspect. While that happened, I met Ron, who was the CCI foreman for the property. We did a full tour of the whole property. We actually got up on the roof and looked at everything, and I was, I was very satisfied with the, the building. And I was, I was very satisfied with the building. There was, he's got a real good crew. I was, I was a little troubled by a couple things. I think that the, and the foreman did note that there were some things that were designed that I don't think that the architect really thought out that well. I think that they, they made some provisions moving forward to address those shortcomings with the architect's design. I'm a little concerned about the stormwater tech system that's in the back of the building. It's, it's half full of water and it's not draining off because the groundwater in the back is high back there. It's, it's been noted. It's been that way since, since the project has been installed. And I've been there a couple times to look at it, to see what's going on. The parking lot, if you went up there, you would see it being a little rolly. And the reason that it's rolly is because of the elevation of the floor of where the fire vehicles are. That floor is probably six inches low and it's been, it's been, everybody, everybody knows it and they're going to have to live with what's going on there. I think if they were to do it again, that, that would have been a different design. But all in all, the quality of the building inside is very good. And I think Chief Zardi's got a, got a great staff and he should be very proud of everybody there. Chris Warren was there and showed me his temporary dispatch. And he's, he's got a great crew also, and they deserve a good building and they got it.
Okay, any questions from the press, Jim?
She's not on.
Okay. Any public input?
Suzanne Ryan, five quick things. The sewer pump station on Lerner Street, I guess it's a pump station, whatever that is. All right, I sent you guys a picture. I said progress. I don't know if you remember the picture, it's just a picture of DPW working there. So my question is, that big contraption that's down at the hazardous waste site, that humongous piece of equipment, is that what's going there? Okay, so then the second part of the question is, have you seen it? Okay. Is that going underground?
No.
Okay, so the town spent quite a bit of money on a charrette. The charrette included Lerner Street and how we could make it more attractive. Well, that pump station thing is not going to help make it more attractive. So my question is, when we budgeted the money for it, did anybody think about how we're going to enclose it? Is there money in the budget to enclose it? Or can it be enclosed? Or can it be screened? Or can there be shrubbery or something? Because it's as big as a school bus, not quite, but the small school bus that goes around town. It's, it's big and it's ugly. So I'm asking for somebody, whoever's in charge of this, to find out perspective, what it's going to look like and what can be done to screen it. Number one. I'm not saying I know how to do it. That's your job. Number two, household hazardous waste signs. Since in June, we're going to be running, hopefully, a successful hazardous waste pickup. If you look on the back of your town report, you will see there are two buildings inside the gate at the hazardous waste facility site. Wouldn't it be nice to put Sarah Silk's sign up by June on one of those buildings? Can we get a, can we get that done? 75 bucks. It's not an expensive sign. It's just a matter of you all agreeing that it can go up on that building.
They already approved?
All right, I guess I don't get an answer to that.
So what do you, well, we'll, we'll talk about it after. Go ahead.
Okay. The other thing is, oh, Albee Beach. We had, you were given a gift of a plan, how to maintain Albee Beach. There are checklist items in this plan of things that should be done. And this was done in what? I don't know what year it was. It's been a while, two years, two, three, four years, five years. Time flies when you're having fun. I would, I don't think John has seen one. I don't know if you've seen one. Okay, so I'd like to give these to you guys to look through and see what you think could be done. There was supposed to, hopefully would be some trails made there that would be suitable so you don't keep compacting the earth down. People walk helter-skelter around there and some fencing. So I know there's no money for it now, but this is something that needs to be looked at. And then I'll leave these. And then the last thing is, and I'm by no means the authority on this, but I have learned that grandfathered is not a blanket statement. It's just not your grandfathered. And John, you were really very careful in wanting to be clear about what grandfathered is. I think we all need to go back and look it up because if it's legally non-conforming and legally existing before a law comes in, key word, legal, then it can most likely be grandfathered. Legally, in the case of short-term rental, would be, I would think, I don't know, that they're registered with the state of New Hampshire for room and meals. That would show they were legally compliant, at least with the state. So I think some more work needs to be done on that before the blanket statement goes out and let everybody off the hook, your grandfathered. I think there needs to be a better definition of that. That's all I have to say. Thank you and good night.
Okay, anything else to come before the board? Or is that I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.